Meeting is now in order and David Smith is the next Vice Mayor. Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Vice Mayor.
We checked.
Okay.
Oh, so we've got two Vice Mayors out there.
In the area, we have a jam packed meeting tonight and we're taking a couple of things out of order. We're going to take the Fire Department Quarterly Report and the Bike Week Update at the beginning of the meeting. On public announcements, our esteemed Town Clerk has made the honor roll for Town Clerks, and she just found out today. So she's a very important part of our town. And she's red in the face right now, a little bit blushing. Are there other public announcements? Okay, a number of us attended the Central Arizona Project Meeting last week and it's a real downer. There's a big fight going on between the Upper Basin States and the Lower Basin States. Three Upper Basin, four Lower Basin States and Mexico. And it looks, we're 20 months away from Ground Zero where the current compact runs out. And there is no Commissioner of Reclamation right now. And the state doesn't know, we don't know what the cutbacks are going to be, other than already the State of Arizona has offered a 20% cutback because we are the junior party in the Lower Colorado River Basin. We've already lost the 20% of our water that is non-Indian agricultural water that we've mostly been banking. And we have another 20% potential loss. Our planning purposes are 25, but there's no guarantee it'll be 25. And so we have a full court press going on. If you were around last Monday, you saw one of the most more interesting meetings where we discussed all the options and work that's going on to deal with that. The CAP people, they're not the negotiators, but they're with the negotiator. We've been to talk to the Arizona Negotiator, who's Mr. Boshatsky, he's the Commissioner. And had a very nice meeting with him. Gosh, it's been six months now, I suppose, something like that. And they're throwing the gauntlet down. There's only so much Arizona can do. Meanwhile, our economy is booming. There are more plants going up everywhere. I just found out today that there's a, that Waymo is going to build a factory for driverless cars in Mesa. They've got a big facility out there. And of course, the chip plants are going in everywhere. There's, one is in operation, another one's under construction, and I've heard that there are more. There were usually plans for four of those going in. They use a ton of water. So it's going to be chaos for the next 20 months because we don't know where this, all we can do is kind of do contingency stuff. Then we're gathering our financial resources. We're probably going to have to make a very large investment in the right to buy water. Then we'll have to buy the equipment to get it here and pay the operating expenses and all that sort of thing. So I feel like I'm Winston Churchill. Saying, you know, what's in front of us is not going to be pretty. And I'm a water customer, and so I suspect that our water rates are going to, they are going to go up. I mean, we've got inflation and other things going on too. The Interconnect Project is due to complete mid next year, and that's going to be our lifeline into the other parts of the system, especially the SRP area. They don't give us water, but they treat water that we provide them, and that's Phoenix. And Phoenix has been extraordinarily cooperative. They're helping us with everything. We're working with them on our sewer effluent as well as that project. And Peoria has been super, super helpful. We're using them to try to get access to some of the stored water that we already have underground. So it's going to be an exciting 20 months. And there is no certainty right now. Frankly, the previous presidential administration completely favored the Northern States and the people in Congress who had those committees are from the Northern States. So it's going to be a real fight. And the CAP meeting went over some of the things they're doing, and they're just kind of throwing the gauntlet down. I don't see how it stays out of court, depending on how this thing goes. But we have good people representing us. The Executive Director of the CAP is a former Bureau of Reclamation employee, and she knows all the ins and outs. That hasn't helped us so far though. So hopefully that'll pay off sooner or later. So that's the only, that's the last announcement, and now we'll go to call to the public. Teresa?
Abraham Abay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. I hope you're all well. I want to just share a perspective. And the perspective is conservation and preservation. You know, the town has been really remarkable in certain ways, conserving and preserving. One of the things that I was here last week is hiring an organization to help us understand what this water future looks like. Two weeks from now, we have an opportunity to hear what the Council, Mayor, and Council are going to do with the perspective of preserving or conserving a large piece of land. And so we are an organization that likes to step outside of our own understanding by hiring outside firms to help us get a perspective and a greater understanding of what's before us to be able to do that. So in the past several months, there's been a lot of arguments about Dark Skies International. I'm not really sure why Dark Skies International gets a bump. They're just a outside resource trying to help us conserve our starry skies. I'm not really sure why there is such angst about this thing. All we're trying to do is just conserve and be able to look upon the skies and look at the stars. It's no different than preserving the land, no different than trying to work in understanding with water or hiring a firm that helps us understand if our road conditions are poor or good. So I think I'm asking just for some reasonableness to actually hear these things out and not make it a political hot potato about this or that. It's just literally about preserving the skies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bay.
David Phelps.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Council. David Phelps here. I come to you with a couple of issues that I have identified that I'm someone at odds with the Council's direction currently with how the handling of a couple of items that have come up as of late are. One is the $5 million under collection, overestimate issue within the utilities. I think this issue is being suppressed intentionally so that we can solve it before we actually understand the problem 100%. But with all the times, all the chances that this Council has to communicate to the public, one of the things you should be disclosing is that we're $5 million in an accounting error, an administrative error. That seems to be the popular use these days, administrative errors. But there has been money that has been spent, apparently, and we need to dig into the books. One of the things I'm requesting today is, I think we should insist on an independent audit, not to have an in-house audit, not that I'm accusing a brilliant accountant of unclean hands. I'm simply wanting to put a barrier between her and the future results of what an independent audit would do for us. And an independent audit would be run by somebody like the Goldwater Institute, who would review the books with an auditing firm and give us a report, and we would make decisions based on that. Some quick math on the $2.7 million that we have inadvertently loaned Desert Hills Water Rate Payers in the last four years ends up being a pretty remarkable amount of money per account, like 30 bucks a month on the discount side. So my next recommendation is that we do not delay on the repayment until y'all are out of office in 2029. That we start the repayment ASAP of $30 a month. And with that money, we can do things like the forgiveness on water rates that we're going to be able to, that we're going to need to be able to do when our curtailments come with the physical water that we're not going to have. And we're going to be able to actually discount water to people that do conserve water. And we're going to be able to incentivize people financially with the money that we could start collecting any time now. I also recommend that we have a line item on the town's water bill that says accounting error adjustment, so people can see that this is what happens when the books aren't right. This is what happens when we don't collect what we need, not to make a profit with our profitable water company that we thought we had, but to break even. Because the money that we're saying we're not going to start collecting until 2029, I believe it is, is an interest-free loan of $5 million. And what could we do with that $5 million in a bunch of other places, like half a town hall, part of our preservation, or just be buying more pipes and valves like we're going to be doing anyway? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Diane Smith. Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, Town Staff, and town people like me. My name is Diane Smith. I am a resident of Cave Creek. And first, I want to thank you for the update on the status of water issues here in Cave Creek that you provided at your last town meeting. I am pleased action has been taken to open three of the four wells which the town previously operated, and it sounds like the fourth is underway. Is that correct? However, I am distressed to hear that the town and the Council still do not know the amount of water available in the town's aquifer. How can we make plans without that significant piece of information? As a concerned citizen, I am asking that the town secure the services of a hydrologist to determine the status of the aquifer under the entire township borders. I am hopeful, as a previous hydrologist mentioned a few years ago, that you will find a significant volume of water in the northern sector of our town. If that is the case, and I don't know that it is, I propose another well be drilled and a line to connect be added to supply, to our current supply. Now, you may complain that this will cost money, but what better way to spend some of the $25 million Cave Creek has in its coffers, especially in this emergency situation? Which brings me to another point. Why move the half percent tax now given to the water company to the general fund? That money ensures that repairs and improvements can be made across budget years without depending on having them out in the budget, or having them approved in the budget, which has happened in the past. The water system was in a sorry shape just a few years back before that tax benefit was provided. Finally, I wish to speak to the issue of rates. I am hopeful that human needs will be considered first and foremost, whether that is based on the number of people expected to occupy a residence or the square footage of that residence. Like farmers to the south, farms at this end should be expected to consider reductions in ways to impact their water supply. Barns should not be evaluated in that rate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
No additional speakers.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Town Manager Report.
Mayor and Council, I just have one thing to report. The Mayor and I had a nice productive meeting with Supervisor Brophy McGee last week and her staff. The water issue came up as we were talking as it relates to the future of water for our community. And she seemed very engaged with us and agreed that there are some mutual concerns as well. We're going to be bringing her out and inviting her at a future meeting for her to do a scheduled public appearance. So we'll work with you and let you know when that will be. But we felt, we left feeling that it was a very productive meeting. She had a number of experiences that she related to us and some questions. And we came with some, both questions and also some areas where we thought we might be able to partner on. So it was very, very productive meeting. So only about an hour, but we were meeting in her office. And so we'll let you know when that is, and we'll hopefully have a nice little reception for her before we have this scheduled public appearance. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. As I mentioned, we're going to take some things out of control. So we're going to have the Fire Department Quarterly Report first.
Mayor and Council, good evenings, residents, good evening. We're here with Chief Tobin again to give you the third quarter report of the 2425 fiscal year, 2425 activities and budget. We'll go through this pretty quick for you, but if there's any questions, please stop us as we're going through. But we're going to try and hit the highlights of this last quarter. And as you've seen before with our reports, we'll identify what's gone on in the quarter, and we'll give you a total year-to-date update as we go. Just work? If not, we'll use that. Okay. Again, this, what you see there is the breakdown on fire, medical, special operations, which is our hazmat and trail rescues. We pretty much run it about 50 to 60 calls per month. Total automatic aid units that come into the area, as you know, we're part of the automatic aid system. And we have a lot of resources that come and assist us, especially on a rescue or a house fire or something along those lines. And then how many times that our unit has gone out? And we average less than four to five times that our unit goes into Phoenix or Daisy or Scottsdale. So we're getting a lot of response back. The training hours are on there as part of our IGA with Daisy. We track and do the training hours. If you recall, earlier this year, we gave you the training report and the training schedule for the year. This is just a graph that just shows the, just in three quarters of our calls are medical calls. We talked about this last time. We talked about the awards that Daisy Mountain has gotten. It's the only one in the state that has won both American Heart Association Awards, and they've done that for several years. And that's important because most three quarters of our calls are medical calls, as you can see by the graphs. This is kind of by month, the big things that we had, and a big part of what we did this past quarter was the opioid money that we got the grant money from, working with the school district to address that ahead of time and have some community meetings. We worked very hard on the wildland fire preparedness. We've worked very hard on the station and everything we're trying to do. We had a couple brush fires, early brush fires, as you see there. And then we've worked with Firewise, which is trying to get our homeowner association communities certified by the state and national recommendations there. Right now, Galloway Ridge and Desert Enclave are waiting final approval from the state, which will give us the national approval, and then we'll do Rancho Madera. That'll give us five communities when we do that. We've worked closely with the regional cooperators, Department of Forestry and Fire Management, the Bureau of Land Management, the TANNO. They assisted with our meetings that we held, our outreach community meetings that many of you attended, which I thought went very well. As a first time through, I thought that went very well. And then we also did the brush cleanup days. So very, very active in the first quarter here. And then on my screen, it doesn't show, but we had the rodeo and we had Bike Week. Again, was this quarter, at least started in this quarter. Chief, if you want to talk about the rodeo a little bit and what you all did for the rodeo?
Yeah, I'd love to, Jim, because as some of you know, I love the rodeo. I think I was there every performance except for maybe Sunday when I had other things I had to do. So it's always a great event that the town puts on. Daisy Mountain is a partner in that event with a sponsorship. And we also have our, one of our medic units that's there in case any of the participants and observers get injured while they're at the rodeo, including those off days that they're doing rodeo and the people aren't there watching them. So we enjoy it. We want to be your partner for things that we have in the town. This is another example of how we're partnering with the town to participate in events like that. As well as Bike Week, I'm particularly really pleased with my staff because as you know, Bike Week is a different event than the rodeo. It's a little bit more spread out. It has an interesting cast of characters. And you know, one of the staff members that works for me at Daisy Mountain is what we call a TLO, a Threat Liaison Officer. His name is Captain Josh Jones. Some of you have maybe met him or seen him. But he interacts with all of our law enforcement partners, all of our medical community partners. And we put together a plan with your town marshal here and the sheriff's office that covers Bike Week. And I think the best thing about that is that you don't even know the plan is going on. It's just going on because it operates real smoothly and all of the partners work together very, very well. And I would say this year's Bike Week was another example of really good cooperation amongst all the agencies that it takes for you to put on an event like this in the town. So we appreciate being a partner in that as well and being part of the planning part that goes with that. We didn't have any significant injuries, which is a good thing, but we were prepared for them if we needed anything during that time. So it was really good event for us as well.
Thanks, Chief. And then I did include in the report for the, mostly for the residents and citizens, this is kind of the overview that went out with the community outreach that we did to let everybody in the town know, here's some of the things that we've done and prepared for, for the wildland preparedness as we've worked in these last few months. And so this is just kind of a quick list of that. I just wanted to have it in the report. The agreements with the Department of Forestry and Fire Management is remember, some people might remember, we did not have those agreements for the town when we had the two fires in 2020. They're the ones that bring in our aircraft and things like that. And then the changes in the responses as of May 1st by ordinance, you passed the ordinance here recently. Then May 1st, we went to a stage one fire restrictions for the town. And luckily, we got a break in the weather, and we're enjoying the heck out of that. And we're going to, we're going to ride it as long as we can, but May 1st, we're still going to stay in stage one fire restrictions. And then we will upgrade our staffing as needed. You also approved by budget to have the brush staffing, but we don't need that right now, and that's thank goodness for that. But we will upgrade that as soon as we can. And Chief, if you want to let everybody know what CAR 1419 is?
Yeah, on this list, the last time I was here, we mentioned a little bit about the CAR 1419 program. So 19 represents the firefighters that perished at the Yarnell Fire Incident. So the valley, all of the agencies from Daisy Mountain into Phoenix, Peoria, Glendale, all put in a wildland specialist during this, during this season that in the event that there's a wildland fire, that these certified by the State of Arizona wildland specialists respond to those incidents, more of a command and control perspective than an actual boots-on-the-ground perspective. Daisy Mountain puts that unit in service. We started it on May 1st. We have 24 hours a day, seven days a week coverage for that unit and those people that provide that expertise when it comes to wildland firefighting. Also on here, you'll see how we change our response system after May 1st. When there's a wild, when there's a brush fire, we call those wildland urban interface incidents, and we just about double the amount of resources that would go to those off-season. And of course, the key here for us and to assist our partners is an overwhelming initial response, right? That's what you get when you have the automatic aid system. You get as much, as much equipment as we possibly can to stop any type of a brush fire from extending into other areas, including the forest and the state lands, right? So our job is to get as much there as we can, as quickly as we possibly can. Of course, in the town, our expectation for that is we have lots of support that comes. Phoenix comes to help us, other Daisy Mountain units, Scottsdale units have all come so that we can have this overwhelming response. And that's the answer to stopping small brush fires from becoming big brush fires. So we put that in service, and as Jim was saying, it starts May 1st. But I want you to know that the way we manage, right? Part of our arrangement between the town and Daisy Mountain is, my job is to manage these things. So when it's raining outside, I don't staff brush trucks and I don't staff water tenders, right? You, your expectation should be for me that I do the right thing and I manage that properly. So we have what's called red alert days when the heat is a certain amount and the humidity is a certain amount. Those are what we call red flag days. Certainly, wind is a big component of that. And whenever that happens, that's when we staff these additional units. So not only do we have the time periods that we look at, the response times, the response protocols that are different this time of year, our CAR 19 program, but we manage those red flag days. And when they're red flag days, we staff up for what could potentially be more significant incidents. And we do that on a regular basis. So that's all part of our response to wildland here in the town and how we manage that for you in the process.
And that's all going on right now. Typically, it used to start Memorial Day weekend is when we used to staff up the trucks and stuff. But now, because of the early fires we've had and things like that, now we're playing it more by what the current conditions are. So that's so everybody can understand that here. This is just a list of some of our major incidents in town and auto aid responses of what we had. And actually, we didn't have that many major incidents. We worked out pretty well. We had a few mountain and trail rescues, one small house fire, more gas leaks and things like that. But a couple brush fires. We had the two brush fires in January and February, which were out of season for us, but we had those fires this year. And then Chief, I'll have you talk a little bit about the additional resources that are coming.
Again, our quarterly update. Today, we went vertical on the fire station construction at 2402 East Cloud. We got the permits to start laying block on top of the footers and the foundations that we put out on the site. The plumbing, the electrical is all underground, so we are now going vertical. So if you drive by the site, you're going to start seeing what's going to look like, the fire station that will serve the west Cave Creek area for years to come. And we're really excited about seeing the progress. It's been great. They were slowed down a little bit today because of the weather. They were going to put a lot more blocks down, but they, I think they sent the guys home. But you'll see that really starting to develop very quickly now. So it's good progress there.
And with that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that's our third quarter report, and we'll come back at the end of the fiscal year with updates for you.
Council, questions?
Thank you so much for having us.
I'd just like to say, I think that the Fire Department and cooperation with Daisy Mountain has been one of the highlights frankly, the last 10 years. It really has. We had, that one fire was, you know, caught them out from my place, and I had a chance to watch it. And the overwhelming response is an understatement. I mean, that thing was knocked down right at the back door of about 12 houses there, but it got knocked down. So Brian, it's a great partnership. I want to thank you very much and your personal efforts. And Jim, of course, you've done wonders for the town. So thank you both very much.
Thank you. Those comments, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Bike Week 2025 Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're going to tag team you today with the Marshal and myself. I will let the Marshal talk about what happened with Bike Week. And then we will go on to what we're planning on going forward with information. There we go. So go ahead, Marshal.
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for your time. Bike Week was an overwhelming success. We had a very, very large amount of people, large amount of motorcycles, large amount of motor vehicles. We had a fantastic partnership with the Sheriff's Office, with Daisy Mountain. We had, as Chief Tobin said, for the amount of people we had in town, it is nothing short of perfection that we did not have serious injuries, that we did not have serious motor vehicle accidents. The event is just a large event. We didn't have any significant fights. We didn't have any significant arrests. We ran DUI tasks. We didn't have any significant arrests. We ran DUI task force out of our district. Didn't have an overwhelming amount of DUIs. Motorcycle accident wise, we had a couple of minor offenders in town, which again is a blessing. The event was just a very good event that continues to grow every single year. We managed the pedestrians. We managed the traffic as best we could. We had a tremendous amount of traffic enforcement units during Bike Week. Those of you that were in town, I'm sure saw cars getting pulled over and motorcycles getting pulled over left and right. Again, highway safety, pedestrian safety is our number one priority as a town during Bike Week. And I think that we managed that fairly well. That's it.
Okay. And while Bike Week was happening, we decided this was a good chance to collect data because we're always trying to figure out how many vehicles we have. And so between the Marshal's efforts with, I believe it was eyesight.
Eyesight Technologies.
Eyesight Technologies and our contract with Y2K, we had quite a bit of collecting, data collecting going on. You probably noticed the pneumatic tubes in the road, which were collecting data over about a two week period. So we had not just the Bike Week collection, but also our normal, you know, this time of season type of collection so it could be compared to. And the, this traffic data will be used by Y2K to produce a report to give us the idea of what's going on. The, so like I said, the tubes were in place. The Marshal coordinated the collection using a separate video collection season or session. This is the initial data. It's, I'm sorry, it's hard to see. What you'll see is that on Friday, there were about 16,200 vehicles in town. That was surpassed by the eyesight technology that we had on Saturday, which was 17,100 vehicles. We chose one day to have the Y2K out here to collect a gross amount of data using a separate video camera system. And this is the comparison that we had here of collecting in, out. We had collection at Schoolhouse. We had collection at Scopa Trail. So we were sort of collecting on both ends of the data. And this will be developed into more data as we come up. So like I said, the peak day, as reported by the mobile eyesight technologies with 17,100 vehicles. And they can break that down into motorcycle, delivery vehicles, regular vehicles. And then that translated to, also translates to pedestrian. And we've given this data to our, to Jim Rounds so that he has data to be able to build the financial projection off of this data. And we'll have the town's traffic consultant come back at a later date to go over this event and see what sort of tweaks we can try and make. But when you're talking about 17,100 vehicles entering a given portion of our town at any point, that's a lot of traffic. And so I think it was a well managed event. No serious injuries or fatalities occurred. And with that, I'll take, we'll take any questions you might have.
How many vehicles are normal, would you say is a normal traffic flow to compare with the 17,000 vehicles?
Let me see, since we had the, since we had our normal day, I'm going to need my glasses to see this. I apologize. Huh? What is it? Yeah, I think a peak day is normally 11,000. Shift. Okay, let me go see if I can get it. An average not, non-event day is around 11,000 max. So another 6,000 vehicles. But I believe if we look, I'm trying to get back to, thank you. So actually, so like eastbound traffic. Thank you. Eastbound traffic that, for the periods on either side was around 7,000 coming in in one direction, six coming in the other. So 11 to 12,000 normal. And we got up to 17,000 during those days. Lot more traffic and also reduced to one lane.
So roughly three times the traffic load.
Correct.
Questions from Council? Anyone else?
Just a comment, Mayor. On my own personal survey, since I go through that route at 2 o'clock every afternoon to go home and feed horses, I timed it on the busiest days, the Thursday and Friday. And my time from the east boundary of Cave Creek to pass the motorcycle parking approximately Dairy Queen was eight minutes one day, nine minutes the other. So it was not a bad wait at all. It just slowly crawled on through.
You just made my day. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm racing for impact on that.
Yeah, there were some, there were some longer periods, but, but eight to nine would seem. If you tried to do it at four, you might've had a little bit longer wait.
Don't get too excited, Marshal. We still gotta, still gotta talk about your retirement.
Anyway, if there are no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the. Well, presentation discussion regarding the economic analysis of the impacts of the Cave Creek Rodeo and Cave Creek Bike Week. And Luis has joined us once more. Welcome back. Welcome, Sherry.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So today we have Luis Cordova. He is with the Rounds Consulting Group. He has worked on the economic analysis that was requested on the rodeo and Bike Week. I think you'll be quite impressed with all the information that he is able to provide us. And so I'm going to turn it over to Luis.
Thank you. And Mayor and Council, it's good to see you all again and appreciate the opportunity to speak today. So our firm conducted an economic impact analysis of the town's two annual events. So the rodeo days and as well as the Cave Creek Bike Week. And the way our impact analysis works is we have a, you know, an economic impact model where everything is driven from estimates on tourism driven economic activity. So how much is spent within the town during those events? So what our model does is we take those primary inputs, which would be the spending. And it calculates the outputs, which would be economic output, which is synonymous with GDP. Think of it as all the money circulating, circulating throughout the local economy. It calculates the number of jobs in terms of full time equivalent supported during the event. So right now, I'll go over the job numbers and maybe they'll seem a little small, but you have to consider that they're annualized. So it could be, you know, 100 jobs during that event, but really it equals, you know, 10 full time equivalent jobs. It also calculates the labor income, which is all the wages that are earned by those employees during the events and the tax revenue impact that at the state, county and municipal level. So within our model, we calculate the, what they call the ripple effects. So when you spend a dollar, it can, it, it circulates throughout the economy and creates additional dollars. So the direct effect is the visitor's spending. So if someone comes into town and spends a dollar, it also creates a secondary impact. As, you know, so let's just say they spend it at a vendor, right? So the vendor has to buy supplies from other local retail shops. So that dollar gets multiplied throughout the economy. And then the workers of, you know, those vendors also earn a dollar or, you know, X amount of money. And then they also spend within the local economy. Say they'll, you know, stop by a food restaurant or somewhere and spend money there. So that creates additional tax revenues. So the sum of all of that activity is the total economic impact. So during rodeo days, it was reported that there's an estimated nearly 10,000 attendees, over 600 contestants and about $2.7 million in total visitors, visitor spending. And the way we estimate that visitor spending is based on surveys of visitors. So we, we basically get an assumption of how much each visitor spends within the town. And I believe it was about $54 per visit. And within that $50, because of the nature of the event, so people come here to spend the money, all of that money gets spent within the town. So using that visitor spending, we calculated that the rodeo days supported 42 jobs, $1.9 million in labor income, generated $5 million in economic activity in the town and generated 317, 317,400 state and local tax revenues. Now, out of that 317,000, the town collected approximately 85,800 during that four day event. And so the majority of that money comes from visitor spending on retail and food and beverages. About 10,000 comes from lodging taxes. So people who come out of town and stay at a Airbnb or at one of the local hotels. The employee spending estimate is that, again, that secondary impact where the workers, you know, the vendors, they also spend money locally. So that generates tax revenues. State shared revenues amount to about $10,000. And that's, that takes into account all the state taxes that are collected during the event and then distributed back to the, to the town. And then you get some additional, you know, about another $1,000 worth of taxes in secondary effects. So, so that's the basis of the rodeo days fiscal impact. Do you have any questions before I move on to Bike Week?
How do you determine how much money people are spending? I know. I know information from our vendors is proprietary, so we don't have that information. But how do you determine the amount that visitors are spending?
Thank you for that question. Yes. So we, we unfortunately don't have like exact survey information on how much they spent. The way we calculate it is we use state statewide data on visitor spending. So we do have surveys on the state, on a statewide basis that shows how much visitors typically spend and by category. And then we compare that to other rodeo events that happen throughout the country. And so with, when we do the, we sort of do an average. So let's just say, you know, the typical visitor spends $10 on food and beverage, right? And the national statistics show, you know, 15. So we'll, we'll do maybe like an average, just depending on, on what it is. So we'll calculate maybe like 1250. So it just depends on the categories. It goes into a little more detail in the report. But we're happy to expand on it too.
Thank you.
How many people took part in the survey?
The, the statewide survey?
The survey at the rodeo.
No, so we don't have a survey of spending from the rodeo. We just have the number of attendees.
Okay.
The, the survey data comes from statewide visitor spending.
Thank you.
Yes.
A question about how you determine lodging taxes and choice of lodging for rodeo participants and attendees. Again, the, the lodging options in Cave Creek are fairly narrow. So I would assume a lot of that lodging is outside the town limits and those tax dollars are going somewhere else. So is there a way to more specifically determine what benefit Cave Creek has from that?
Yes, and you're right. And I'll go over this a little more in the Bike Week because it's a little more prevalent on how the money essentially leaks out of the town. But, but you're right. So a lot of these visitors, you know, will come to, to Arizona really to go on, to go to a number of different amenities or recreational events and also join the county, the rodeo. So everything that's in our model is what's captured within the town. So it doesn't capture the additional stuff that is, that goes on outside the town. So that, so there would, there is a lot more that goes on. But that, that's why we, the state shared revenues are so high because it's captured in another city. And, but you, you still get that based on the, on your population, right? In terms of the lodging, so what we did is we looked at the available rooms during that time period, what the average daily rate was and used a standard occupancy. So I think it was like 70% occupied during that time. So we assumed, you know, 70% of the available supply of hotels were occupied by these rodeo visitors. And then in addition to that, we estimated, I think it's about 30% come from out of state. So from there, we, we estimate which, how many would stay within the town in, you know, the short term rentals, because that's the only thing that there would be besides the hotels. So those are all estimates based on availability of what is actually in the town.
One more?
Sure, sure.
And also were economic data from the rodeo parade or other rodeo related events that occurred in town? Was that impact also included in this?
Yes.
Because that's more day, more days of visitors, more spending?
So, so, so no, the rodeo parade is not included in this. It's just the, the four day event, the rodeo itself.
Okay.
Other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. I guess we're on to the Bike Week.
So in terms of Bike Week, we use the daily vehicle trips that was previously discussed, which when we were looking at the averages, there's about 12,600 daily vehicle trips. So that's what we use for the amount of visitors coming into the town. Because it is a longer time period, the total amount spent is about $7.1 million. Within this, within that $7.1 million though, only about 50% is captured within the town. Where the other, the other 50% is spent in nearby communities of Phoenix and Scottsdale and Carefree. And again, the, how we came up with that estimate was we looked at similar Bike Week events throughout the country and looked at the, they had a lot more granular data on how spending was, was done throughout the community. So we use a lot of those estimates. And then we also use the Arizona Department of, or not, not the Arizona Department of, the Department of Tourism and their survey data to look at visitor spending. So during Cave Creek Bike Week, the event itself supported about 120 jobs during that time period. $5.3 million in labor income, which again is the wages earned by those jobs. It had a $3.8 million economic impact and generated about 834,400 state and local tax revenues. From, from that total, the town collected about $150,000. And the majority of that again is on retail and restaurant and bar taxes. There's, there's lodging taxes during that event too. And state shared revenues makes a large portion of that. That's it for the presentation. If there's any other questions?
Questions? Dusty?
How does our, how does that compare with a non-Bike Week week?
The. So it's a good question. So we, so we can't, we don't have data by week on collections, but we do have monthly data. So one of the things we're looking at is like how, how much more tax revenues come in during those, April and March. And there was about an additional, I think it was $300,000 come in more than the average monthly that comes in. And so if you, if you just take this into consideration, say if one month was 300,000 more, you know, you could. um, you know, you could attribute Bike Week to generating about half of that.
Uh, that's perfect. I mean, one of the things that we've been struggling with is how do you characterize how much money you're making? Is it a uh net benefit to the town? I mean, Bike Week's not going away, but it's nice to know that the town is actually making money during Bike Week instead of being a net net zero effect uh event. Does that make sense?
Yes, huh?
So that's kind of where we wanted with the economic analysis, that and the rodeo. And the only comment I'd have about the rodeo is uh better get busy and get that place filled up every weekend. Luke?
Okay. Good deal.
Uh, what, one question about the methodology. Does it factor in uh the effective lost revenues for businesses that may have reduced access or reduce traffic flow to their businesses during that period of time with Bike Week?
So it it's it's not a, it doesn't calculate the net benefit like you just described. It doesn't account for that lost tax ta- tax revenue, but in the aggregate, um, if you do look at the monthly's monthly receivables, it does show that they do bring in more than um than the typical month.
Yeah, because that is one thing we have heard about from certain businesses that uh it uh is an economic decline for them during that particular time. Uh, but it's hard to to take it other than kind of anecdotal information as reported by individual businesses.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? Well, thank you very much. It uh it very interesting. It's it's interesting to see a number on something that's so amorphous. Thank you. We'll we'll look forward to seeing you again, Louis.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. Next on the uh action items is the consent agenda. Item one is council approval of resolution number twenty two two zero two five dash zero five, designating Finance Director Sherry R. White as Chief Fiscal Officer for the Town of Cave Creek for the fiscal year twenty twenty six. Number two is approval of the February sixth, twenty twenty five Special Town Council Work Session Minutes. Number three is approval of the March third, twenty twenty five Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes. And number four is approval of the March seventeenth, twenty twenty five Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes. Is there um motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We're on to the general agenda. First one is council discussion, possible approval of resolution number twenty twenty five dash eleven requesting a second amendment extending the expiration date of the preannexation and development agreement between the Town of Cave Creek and CSTE Holdings LLC for the Kahava Springs Development and authorizing the town manager and staff to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, give a little bit of background. Uh, the town entered into the first uh preannexation and development agreement with Kahava Springs in um in April of tw- uh two thousand and five. So that ran for a number of years, and it was actually, the First Amendment was put in place in two thousand and twelve. Uh, the First Amendment was put in place to allow the developers some time to uh complete the improvement. So Kahava Springs, I didn't have a slide, I probably should have. I usually bring slides up here, but it's the two hundred and thirty lot development in the northwest portion of the town. Um, so again, it's been on the uh, the town's been working with the developers since two thousand and five in this. Uh, about two thousand and eight, they they started the water line uh to feed this project cause it actually is is a few miles away from the town's distribution system. And in two thousand and twelve, that gave them the time to continue that water line and build the roadway up to the project. That development agreement was set to expire um this month. Um, but last fall, the CTS Holdings actually took ownership over the property. Um, so the water line improvements were never fully completed. There's actually still some punchless items still left on the roadway access. We're asking for some time until September. We've actually already started good discussions with CTA CST Holdings to develop what we need to do to to bring this project to conclusion uh and redo the development agreement. Uh, they've actually already engaged an engineer who's brought forward a new development plan for the water system. Uh, they're talking about two inline booster stations, which the benefit does is actually better ties into the town's distribution system, matches what we have in our integrated master plan and allows for the future service of the area known as the West Side Dwyb. So they'll actually get a pressure zone out of this that they can expand on to uh feed their area. The two inline boosters and feed the top of the hill will allow their regular onsite booster station. So uh by giving us some time till September, it uh, we didn't want the existing agreement to expire and have to start all over again. So we're just asking to get it to the end of September. We'll probably come back. I know council has a break during the summer, but probably just before we go back for amendment, we'll probably just present all the the deal points to council. And then by the end of September, we'll actually ask for an action to extend the development agreement. So it's not, nothing really tonight except giving us staff the time to complete discussions that we've already had with uh with CST Holdings since last fall. So they seem to be a good partner to work with, and I think we can uh get some good things for the town overall out of this by extending it and working with them. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions?
Yes. Um, exhibit A says lots fifty three through lots two thirty. What happened to lots one through fifty two?
That might be a good catch on you because I think the exhibit, that was the um you know what, that is a mistake. So the legal exhibit should have included Watts one through fifty two in that. So I'm not sure how we can amend that, Bill.
Both parties agree with it.
Okay. Okay. So with your approval tonight, then we can make sure that they're agreeing to it. So it's supposed to be the entire property. So that was an add on to the uh development agreement, this this one that we put together. Apologize for that. Good catch.
Councilmember Argentin?
Um. Thank you. Uh, Sean, you use the term roadway access. What was that referring to?
Um, well, Kahava Springs was not tied into the town's uh roadway system, so they had to complete the roadway of, you know, really the roadway improvements didn't real, their roadway access starts at twenty fourth street and Joy Ranch Road, then runs north and then uh across Rockaway Hills Drive and then up to the property itself. So they they've completed most of the offsite roadway needed to to connect to the town's roadway system. And included with that is actually the twelve inch water line, and then they've also done the electrical and every other utilities that come up to the property.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Sean, what are you referring to in Rockaway Hills? What access is that?
Uh, well, Rockaway Hills uh is the east west route, and then it turns north up, and I'm sorry, I don't have a map. And then it turns up, I think it's thirty sixth street, and I'll look to thirty second street alignment and then goes to the property.
And just one more quick question. Has there been any discussion with staff so far about a new or not existing ingress egress being added to the development plan coming out in September?
Not at this point. Uh, that would come from uh, well, that'd be uh uh our town engineer, Hal Maron, and probably Luke would be the ones better to answer that. But at this point, there there's still, it's a uh from a utility standpoint, we're looking at the one.
Well, I understand, but I'm just asking if there's been discussions or requests or input from the developer. Luke said no.
No.
Thank you.
Cynthia?
Uh, just a question. Uh, there was discussion in the past of Water Improvement District, four neighbors to the south. Uh, is the new owner continuing to participate in a way that will facilitate that water district development and levels of cooperation there?
Yes, actually, this is, we're getting, I think, a better improvement to those uh residents. We we refer to them as the West Side Dwyb customers, but those are the the Cave Creek customers that live just south of Kahava Springs that the twelve inch water line currently passes adjacent to their properties. Uh, the the uh, the new developer is is willing and has been negotiating with us to do a dual booster station. So the first one would be at thirty uh twenty fourth street and Joy Ranch Road, which would provide service to those West Side customers for us.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Other questions from council?
Have we notified the Dwyb customers that that uh they'll be able to hook up? And have we given them kind of a about how much it might cost for them to hook up?
Um, the, we've notified him. I'm in contact with Bill Bussor over a few months. Um, but as far as the cost, the actual connection to the system, and then as we pointed out in the development agreement, um, there's gonna be an oversizing component for the Dwyb that has to all be uh Mac or designed and engineered and brought together. So we still need to do a master plan for the, what we refer to as the West Side Dwyb Water Improvement Area.
What I think we need to do, though, is give them a heads up that there's going to be a bill coming. And we can probably get an idea of about how much that might be and give them a range. It's gonna cost ten to fifteen thousand, you know, ten to twenty thousand, whatever it happens to, happens to be. I think that would be kind of a fair heads up to them. Uh, otherwise, you know, we're gonna say, hey, we're cutting off the uh the hall and water, and you guys gotta hook up, and oh yeah, by the way, cough up an additional twenty K. I mean, that's that's not a good way to to handle that. So we might wanna start prepping them periodically with send, just sending a note out saying, hey, understand that when this gets done, um, you're gonna need to start making your connections.
Good point. Thank you.
Other questions? I've I've got a couple here. Um, I I I didn't see anything in there, but we're providing security up there, which is protecting their investment. Are we being reimbursed for that? And and?
Yeah.
Hal, can you come up? Cause I know you've had some discussions with them on this issue.
Currently, in order to take away the playground that was being created along thirty second street, Saddle Mountain, turned out to be a great place for people wanting to drag strip. So we put up some uh jersey barriers across the road to create a slalom course that they couldn't do. And we also set up a camera system uh at our gate because we were getting our gate vandalized. So we ended up setting up a camera system. We've talked to them. We we did have a meeting with the holding company, and they said that they would be willing to take over the costs. Right now, we pay about thirteen hundred dollars a month for the security system. The jersey barriers were free. We had them in our yard.
Certainly not thirteen hundred a month.
No, thirteen hundred a month is what we pay for the video surveillance that is reported to uh, yes, one three zero zero is what we pay every month to the.
U.S. dollars?
Yeah. See? Uh, I'd I'd rather them be in uh Canadian or um Canadian dollars, yeah.
Careful, Sean's next to you.
I know.
A resident Canuck.
So so Hal, I mean, we gave them notice, but we should just cut that off if they don't
Right.
comply with a certain period of time.
That's the idea is that while we have this extension, uh, we want them to take over that uh those costs if they still want them. And if not, then we will terminate the service.
Second thing is, who is, who is CSTE?
They're the, we call them the trustees, and I I'm, I don't know the.
Are they developer or are they just a trustee to flip it to? So we're not working with the?
No, Mayor and Councilmember, we're actually working, CTSU is a holding company that that basically took out a receivership, and they do this around the country where they pick up properties, and they just get it prepped to actually sell off, so they wouldn't be developing it. We actually have had some conversations, hell, specifically with two or three actual home builders that would like to pick up the property. And they would, effectively, CTSU will get it packaged and then uh put it on the market for someone else to pick up and then actually finish the product and actually do the physical construction out there. So they're a bank, a trustee, a holding company that picked it up uh through us. It's the bankruptcy.
Okay, and uh the the oversizing the line, how much is that going to cost?
Well, the oversizing line has been.
And pumps and power equipment and et cetera.
Yeah, so the the line itself is a twelve inch water line. That was negotiated back in the original development agreement, so that's in the ground right now. So I don't consider that to be oversizing. The oversizing that got brought up was if they have to oversize that first booster pump station at twenty fourth street and Joy Ranch Road to allow for uh either initial pumps or future ability to expand it. That's what's, that's what we're wrapping up with the developer right now. We've actually got them to agree, um, I think in a good favor to actually assume that they can get at least five hundred gallons a minute up the entire pipeline to actually not just uh meet their domestic demands, but for fire flow along the entire pipeline, all the way to the property itself. So the first booster pump station actually provides both fire protection as well as meets their domestic demand. So the oversize would be to actually, what's necessary to add another set of pumps for the the Dwyb area. And we have to discuss and going into that, whether there's some initial oversizing, like the electrical equipment to accommodate that. That's what we're discussing right now with them.
Sounds expensive. And 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 there is no, the 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 Dwyb is not uh not formed enough. I, help me here, Bill. I, but but they have no way, they have, there's no entity there to agree to pay for that or to reimburse the town for all, for the equipment.
Oh, you have our individuals said they would become members of the Dwyb, and that's where we are right now.
So what's the next step? Gi- give me a a brief on uh, do we need to wait till the developer gets here before all that gets uh straightened out?
I'm not involved with this. My 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 thought is this will be an excellent opportunity.
Oh, this would be an excellent opportunity. What Sean describes, the two pumps, that replaces when Hal and I first got involved in this about ten years ago, the fight was one versus two. Two is much better, and two for the reasons Sean describes. And the first pump could actually, booster pump would actually be available for the the Dwyb customers. Now is the time, but again, I'm not, I'm not involved in those negotiations. Now would be the time to capture the constructive approach that the the trustee has, and it's been very constructive to say, if we're gonna go down the 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 path of the first booster pump, they they want a certain amount. We need it. You asked about oversizing? That's a good question. Oversizing could be built in now if we knew the Dwyb was ready to step up. So now would be the time to talk to the Dwyb, the Dwyb people. So you're you're asking very good questions. You you, we'd we'd rather not have, I mean, objective would be not to have stranded investment where we have oversizing and we spent money and then we never get the customers of the water company, which I presume would carry this cost if 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 the Dwyb is never formed or something happens. So there there's a risk here on the customers of the water company that we need to manage. I think I once calculated years ago that it took two weeks for a gallon of water to get from Cloud Road up to the tank they're gonna put in up there. By the time it gets there, it's going to be THC out of compliance. So are 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 is, are we going to put in stripping up there? What are we gonna do about THC issues?
Yes, Mayor.
And rechlorination?
Yeah, actually, the uh engineer who's proposed uh the the current layout to us actually has a rechlorination site at the second inline booster station, and there'll be a TTHM removal system and a rechlorination system at the uh the site itself. So it gives us opportunity to better manage that portion of the distribution system that is a long uh twelve inch line. Looking back, I wish they wouldn't have put that in, but that's actually physically what's been in the ground for a number of years going up to the site. But yeah, we are accounting for waterfall, the issues at the top with with equipment, and that'll be on them to construct. Going back to the oversizing component, my thought would be going into these discussions is, again, they need at least five hundred gallons a minute for fire protection cause they only have the one ingress egress out of the property. So we're saying you need the fire protection along your roadway access and then to meet their domestic demands.
So they they're paying for that?
Yeah, that's that's theirs. Any oversizing, I'd say we can tie to a future Dwyb formation. And hey, we don't need to to build it right now. It's on them, and then they can get a reimbursement at a later date. We can do it that way simply.
The people who've signed up or said verbally that they were gonna sign up to the WID, do they understand the costs that are coming?
Um, Mayor Councilmember, I, the answer is no, because we actually haven't put it all together. We've talked about doing some sort of a mini master plan in that area to actually lay out what the lines would look like and what's what it would actually look like to actually form the Dwyb. It's not just this one inline booster station. There's actually a distribution system.
No, I understand, but somebody's gotta pay for that. And the way that it would, Dwybs work is they would pay for all that. We shouldn't have to pay for anything. Now, if they choose to dissolve their Dwyb, then that throws it back on our water company. So we neither need to get the Dwyb to form or not to form, but they need to give us an answer now before we can proceed with making decisions. I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna throw in a bunch of money on this, right?
Uh, this point, Mayor Councilmember, I'd say that that we're not gonna participate financially right now at this point, so.
We're not doing any financial with the booster stations?
I'm, uh, my argument will be that, no, we don't need it right now. We don't have customers, so.
We we need to get the Dwyb to either step up to the plate or or uh sit off. I I'm very concerned that we're gonna buy into this. They're gonna oversize everything, just like the mayor said. And then we're left holding the bag because the Dwyb never formed. So that needs to be the next step.
Just for clarity, um, for the purpose of of this discussion, um, the developer or and or um, the trustee will be putting in those improvements, correct? And once those improvements are in, they're gonna dedicate that back to the town, correct?
Correct. Once they can, they will, they'll put up a plan together for someone else to build it, so they're not gonna build it. They're gonna get.
It'll be the developer.
Whoever picks up the property will now know the certainty of what they need to build for improvements to complete the project. Once they get on board, then they would build it and they would dedicate to us to operate the system overall. As far as the oversizing, yeah, I think they they brought it up. My my take on the oversizing is, uh, you know, it's not needed right now. The future Dwyb is allowing for sort of a future pump improvements to the site. So, you know, we would say if you, you might be worth something in the future, but it would require the Dwyb to form. So I'm trying to get the town out of just not paying anything right now, but we will get the infrastructure to pay for. Lots of pay for the electrical, the ongoing operational costs that once they get built.
I understand.
Yeah.
But if the Dwyb doesn't form, then all of the water customers, including the people in that Dwyb, are going to get a bill. If the Dwyb does it, then the Dwyb gets the bill.
It doesn't, doesn't really get, oh, the oversizing is to accommodate the future.
I'm not talking about the oversizing. Let me just talk about the D W I D itself.
Yeah.
If, and my understanding of Arizona law, and you know, of course I could be wrong, but my understanding Arizona law is. The D W I D is responsible for all the pipes, pumps and valves in their D W I D, right?
Yes, I believe so.
If they don't form the D W I D, then we're going to be responsible for putting those pipe pumps and valves in. Which means that's an additional cost for the rest of the people on Cave Creek Water.
You're assuming the town undertakes the oversizing. That, that now is key. As this, the trustee begins to look at the booster pump that meets, meets his needs with the developer paying. They're not going to pay for oversizing. So the point is, the point is if there's no oversizing, the D W I D doesn't, never gets water. And so the D W I D needs to be told, now would be the time to work with the developer to oversize with the D W I D committing. The reason you create D W I Ds is so the rest of the town doesn't pay for it.
Understand, but if, but let's also take a look at it realistically. A lot of those people aren't going to have the money to do that. So. How do we get out of the water hauling business? We have to put pipes, you know, pipes in the ground. So. One way or another, the water customers are going to pay. I want to know if it's going to be the D W I D customers or if it's going to be the rest of the, you know, rest of the, the town. Cause we'll, we will have to do that.
You're, you mean to, to replace the water hauling?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one way or another, we're going to have to replace that water hauling. I mean, the state's not going to let us do that forever. They're just not.
I, I need to talk to, I mean, I, I, I've not been in the negotiations. I need to talk.
You see where I'm coming from though, right?
Sir, now would be the time to address those questions.
And thi- this is where our leverage is. This is our leverage. This is the time when we have leverage to get the right thing done. For the other ratepayers in town and to facilitate. Uh, the D W I D. Uh, is there anything preventing the D W I D from forming? I guess they don't have a cost yet.
They're fearful of the cost. So I mean, we, we've been unable to estimate a cost until this new developer, trustee. Has come in with realistic plans. Now would be the time to look at those plans. Look at the, the, the amount they're willing to pay and then see with our engineers. What would be the cost for excess capacity to address D W I D's needs and say, it's put up, put up or shut up. Now would be the time to commit because we're ready to work with this developer to undertake the expense. We, we, the rest of the town won't pay for this oversizing. You need to. Are you willing to step up? Those discussions have to occur.
Okay. And we, do we get another bite at this apple after this extension?
Oh, yeah. All this is, is giving you a chance to take a bite. This is, this is just to make sure it extends so we can have these discussions.
So, so it seems like there is a fuse on this. There's a time when we have to. Investigate and get some kind of commitment. I don't, I'm not sure. Is, is a D W I D actually been formed? It ha- it has not been formed. So, and typically they would want, do they typically have a cost? Of the cost of the D W I D before they form a D W I D or is that after, after?
I'm doing this from memory. I'm pretty sure you, the county creates the D W I D. And so we've got a lot of work to do. I, I, let me, let me talk to the negotiators and see what they're doing and see how we can begin folding the D W I D in. Mr. Bissour has been a big supporter of the town. I truly believe with his leadership, we can get the D W I D working. But right now, there's, there hasn't been created and they're just waiting for you to work with the, honestly, to trip up the way that. Councilmember Rose is describing. And so we need to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I mean, the, the town is plagued with overcapacity in a number of utilities. The, the sewer plant is the poster child for that, but that twelve inch line. And the eight, eight inch line going up spur cross are two other ones that come to mind immediately. And, and, and give, and Sean has to deal with that all the time. So we, we just want to make sure that this is another case where we have the stranded capacity that, that. That the ratepayers or somebody's going to, going to, going to pay for. And that we do this while we have the negotiating ability to do that, to, to hold someone's feet to the fire.
So now I have a question. Does CSTE have a home address? Do we know where they're located? Or that this is an Arizona group?
No, it's, it's Delaware, I believe, is where the company is based out of. They've actually come visited the property a couple of times. We've actually met with their, 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 the partner discussed their dealing with this. So they, they seem really eager because again, they're just a holding company. Their goal is to get this, uh, to get some development certainty so they can market it properly. Because what keeps coming back is to property owners or potential pro, uh, buyers for the property is what improvements are still necessary. You know, and we really want to map out the, the, um, uh, the utility sites, the two off sites and the one onsite. And then there's some roadway improvements to get done also. So we got to map all this out. So they, they know going into uncertainty. Cause they can't go vertical with construction until they get the pipeline engaged and they actually have water services at the top of the hill. And they have a roadway that we've accepted. We haven't accepted the roadway. We haven't accepted the pipeline yet. So.
This, this has been a long-term thing. I think they've been here almost as long as I have.
And we did not want to accept the roadway until we knew that the water lines when charged wouldn't create a miniature, miniature fountain hills all the way up the roadway. And I have given tours to at least two, uh, national home builders that are looking at the property. So.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just reiterate something to the mayor and council. Again, I think the staff has really done a good job with what you see. The behind the scenes negotiations with, um, the trustee have basically resulted in what I would consider a. Much better infrastructure design concept, which is going to improve the D W I D even much sooner than what would have happened earlier. The, the questions that have been raised are very good questions and we're going to definitely get additional information put together. That we'll share with you once we have that. But I just want to let you know. We have always approached that this is a great opportunity. There's a number of people in that area of town that do not have water. Portable water from the Cave Creek Water. And so we've always approached this as an opportunity for us to try to help those residents out. So, um, that's, that's basically what our goal is. And I think what we need to do is figure out what their per rata share of cost sharing is for this. And that's what I think Sean was indicating. We need to have some sort of a, a, a mini master plan. That kind of identifies the infrastructure costs of extending water from that line to the, the D W I D.
All right. I agree. I've got no problem with that. That's why my question about who's paying. The, the only thing that I've got is six months. This agreement will be finalized, correct?
Right.
So we essentially have six months to get something done. To know the full impact before they come back to us and say, hey, this is, this is the way we're going to do it. So your mini master plan, better hurry up on. I mean, you've literally got six months according to this agreement.
No, I'm not understanding it that way. Um, the, the, the new purchaser, the developer or master developer, they're going to have to put this in. So these trustees will not be doing it, but we do have the development agreement, um, with them. And the successors will be ultimately the master developer of that. And they will be the ones putting in those water.
I understand that, but essentially we have six months to get something to those D W I D customers. To say, hey, here's what your fair share of the bill is going to be if you want water.
See it that way.
I'm not sure it's possible.
I, I think for instance, it all depends on when that infrastructure is put in by the developer. I mean, the costs, you would hate to give them a number that's not going to be accurate when it's time to pay up.
But within six months, they'll, they'll have an idea of what they're going to put in, correct?
I would agree an estimate would be.
Yeah, so there should be an estimate that goes out to the D W I D customers. At the same time saying, if you want this, this is what it's going to cost.
Right. Uh, as I mentioned, we will come back to you and likely when we come back for the extension of this agreement, hopefully we'll have those numbers that you're talking about.
And I think what we really need is how, how much is that oversizing potentially going to cost? The D W I D or the town if the D W I D has never formed? What, we don't really know the size of that yet and, and some idea what that is. Because they're really, if I understand this correctly, the trustee is just trying to estimate costs. So they can negotiate a price with a developer. Is that what we see going on?
Not so much cost as much as the improvements. I think their, their scope of work, they've engaged in engineering from NCS who actually is doing some work for the town. And I believe their, 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 the scope was to do a basis design report that the town agreed to. That would go into the development agreement and, and come up with a cost estimate of what that might be. The, the, uh, design for the twenty fourth street Joy Ranch booster station that I saw that NCS put together. Allowed for future expansion, additional pumps. Cause again, the, the, the Cava Springs needs to do a booster pump station meets their domestic demands at the top of the hill, which is about a hundred and twenty gallons a minute. I believe it's a peak flow and then the fire flow. So five hundred gallons a minute. They're, they're, they, they trustee brought up the point about oversizing. I really don't think there is oversizing in this first phase. There's, there's connections for a future additional booster pumps. That's, that's what the oversizing will be. So we're talking a couple of pump connections.
So, so the cost is going to be de minimis then?
I think so in this first phase.
Okay, well, as long as we make sure that, that in fact happens.
With utility, what Sean said, this is light years or better where we were four years ago. We had nothing four years ago. We now have a trustee and a developer getting ready to present an option. And once we have that option, I think we then can configure costs so that we can communicate with the people that would create the D W I D.
And I've heard anecdotally that there are a number of wells going dry down, up there. A number, the existing wells are going dry, that the number of wells in action are. Uh, not quite in single digits, still double digits, I guess.
And then if the, and then if the D W I D doesn't form, as far as the pipelines go, they don't get extended from saddle mountain and twenty fourth street. Up to the D W I D area.
Say that again.
So if the D W I D does not form, right now the twelve inch line turns, uh, east at, uh, saddle mountain and twenty sixth street. If the, uh, D W I D does not form, then there's no money to extend the water lines up to those. D W I D area customers from that area to make the connection. So the pump station is just a, a missing can, you know, missing pump station out of it. Electrical is not really that much of a change and, you know, so the costs are really minor. To make the connection for the D W I D, you know, if the D W I D doesn't form. So we're not really oversizing the system. We're looking at a system that could be expanded upon. For, and they're fairly small pumps at a hundred and twenty gallons, because the D W I D is not going to be much more than that.
Okay.
I have a question for the, for the ones that are on the wells over there and the wells are going dry. Are they also water customers?
If they've, the agreement that the town has with the, the D W I D customers is if they sign on to the agreement to, to support the D W I D. They can actually become a town water customer and use the hauling station.
Do we have water for them to do that?
We built it into the master plan. We accounted for the D W I B. It's actually a, a customer group. So that actually was accounted for on water resources and it's actually called out in our master plan specifically. We want to make sure that.
I just want to make sure that, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody quest, questions, comments? Okay, so, uh, we're looking for a, um. Okay, I, I guess I'll make this motion. A motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash eleven with the corrections. With the corrections.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. Six, zero, excuse me. That was an automatic statement. I can't count. Number two is council discussion, possible approval of resolution number, did I give the wrong resolution? I, I'm, I'm going to say that again, because I think I read this, the one below that. I, I move to approve, uh, resolution number twenty twenty five dash eleven. Dusty?
Second.
Second.
Alls in favor? Opposed? Six, zero. All right. Uh, number two is council discussion process approval of resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero six, which I. Guess, do I need to rescind that approval of the second one? Approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six public safety personnel retirement system pension funding policy. And expecting the town's share of assets and liabilities under the public safety personnel retirement system. Based on the system's actuarial valuation report. Welcome back, Sheri.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor Council. So the, um, public safety, uh, personnel retirement system, the acronym PSPRS is which, which we use all the time. So, um, we do need to adopt our fiscal year twenty six funding policy. This is a requirement by state statutes to have this policy and to adopt it each year. The statute requires that the policy include how we will maintain stability of our required contributions. How and when funding requirements will be met and what will be our target for our funding ratio. Also, as part of the policy, we do have to formally accept our share of the assets and liabilities that are in the actuarial valuation report. They want us to acknowledge that so that we can't come back and say that wasn't our, wasn't our numbers. And then the, the, um, state statutes also require that this must be posted on our website. So the actuarial valuation report, um, it's done each year. This is what identifies the status of our plan. With the public safety, uh, personnel retirement system, P, PSPRS. It is what is referred to as an agent multiple employer retirement plan. What that means is they track the assets and liabilities of each member agency separately. So we know exactly what our portion of our, of the assets and liabilities are in the plan. It's pooling to get better rates on, um, investments because it's such a large, uh, pool that they can invest in things that we wouldn't be able to. The actuarial report also establishes what is the minimum required contribution for the fiscal year following when they issue it. So it is a delayed type of process. The June thirty, twenty twenty four report was issued November of twenty four. And in that report, it included what is the required minimum contribution for fiscal year twenty six. We will not have the fiscal year twenty five report until somewhere in that same timeframe, November, December, the end of the year. Which we will already be about halfway through fiscal year twenty six at that point. So in the report, um, here is a summary comparison to the previous year of our unfunded liability. So the first line there is what the estimated liabilities are. You can see the liabilities increased a little bit. From nine hundred and forty one thousand to about a million. The assets, um, as of June thirty twenty three were about seven hundred and thirty thousand, grew a little bit as of six thirty twenty four of seven hundred and ninety three. So that net there is what we're calling the unfunded liability, that we don't have enough assets in the plan to cover how much our liability is. So the unfunded liability grew slightly from two hundred and eleven thousand to two hundred and eighteen thousand as of June thirty, twenty twenty four. We do have a pretty good funded status, um, seventy seven percent as of twenty twenty three, seventy eight percent as of, um, twenty twenty four. I don't know if you're familiar with all the horror stories of, of what happened several years ago. When they said, we have a crisis with PSPRS and everybody started making additional contributions and things. So we're, we're at a pretty good, uh, rate for where we're at right now. In the current fiscal year, the fiscal year twenty five budget, the contribution, um, was a total of seventy five thousand. So that included some extra money going into the plan. What was in the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty six that we talked about in the work session was another seventy five thousand. So neither of those additional amounts are included in this number as of June thirty, twenty twenty four, because that's after that fact. The main thing for us is the asset experience that impacts what the changes are in our numbers. For fiscal year twenty four, the return on the market value of the investments was ten point two percent. So really well, they can get involved in, in, as I said, investments that we cannot, cannot do. That ten point two percent, what they do is they don't look at things from one year, um, at a time. And the spikes of up and down and, and what interest rates are. They use a seven year smoothing average, which the seven year smoothing average was seven point one percent. So obviously there was some years lower than the ten point two that brought that average down. In their planning, what they do is they assume an average return over time is seven point two. So the seven year is a little bit less, um, on the, the earnings. In the policy, what we've recommended as the, um, target ratio is to be at ninety percent to a hundred percent by June thirty, twenty twenty seven. So with the seventy five thousand, uh, this year, seventy five thousand next year. We'd be somewhere in the vicinity of seventy five thousand or a little bit less in fiscal year twenty seven to get to a hundred percent, um, funded. Uh, of course, it depends upon how the market goes and things like that. Uh, of course, it depends upon how the market goes and things like that. Um, one of the things at setting it with this range, instead of saying we want to be at one hundred percent, is we don't actually have active employees in the plan. Um, so, um, it's really just paying off this, this amount. And, um, so we don't want to go too crazy and overfund the plan, since there's, there's not anyone active. The, uh, funding approach for fiscal year twenty-six, so the minimum annual required contribution is twenty-two thousand, six-ten. Um, that is based on the amortization that, um, the actuaries calculate of how much over time. And the way that they do this, they used to have a closed period that they would amortize the unfunded liability over a set period of time. Now what they're doing is they're doing fifteen-year layers. So each year they say, okay, now how much is the unfunded liability changed now? Let's layer that portion at a fifteen-year amortization. So it keeps going further and further out. Um, ideally, we want to be at that ninety to a hundred percent instead of dragging out the, the amounts. Um, so to get to the total contribution of the seventy-five thousand, that means we'd be making an additional payment of fifty-two thousand, um, over and above that minimum required. And, um, what the policy proposes is that we would pay the full amount at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, as you can see, they earn much better interest rates than what we do. And to get that money into the plan as soon as possible and start earning those higher interest rates is ideal. Also, the liability incurs interest charges, so we want to bring that down as soon as possible and avoid the interest charges. Any questions?
Seeing none. I guess we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a public comment? Does anyone?
I have no, I have no one wishing to speak on this item.
Good.
Uh, I move approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh six, approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Pension Funding Policy. And accepting the town's share of assets and liabilities under the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. Based on the system's actuarial valuation report.
Second.
Okay, uh, comments?
We need to get the money in there.
Cave Creek has a good record of having done well with our employees. We treat our employees well. And I think they serve the community well, and I think that's a relationship that is important to the community, the council, and to the whole team. Thank you.
Other council members, comments? Seeing none, uh. All those in favor of this, uh. Approving this twenty twenty-five dash zero six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it six zero. Thank you. And, uh, you're not leaving, so.
I've got, I've got a stack here, Mayor.
Sheri's been busy. Uh, council discussion, possible approval of second reading of ordinance number, um. Oh, two oh two-five dash zero one, amending the town code Title III Administration, Chapter thirty-seven. Revenue and Finance, Subchapter Purchasing, Section thirty-seven dot zero-two procedure, procedure generally.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is for the second reading of this ordinance. The first reading was on March third. Um, at that time, uh, the request was to increase the threshold of what the town manager can approve as far as, um, uh, purchases and agreements uh, to a hundred thousand. And, uh, we also wanted to include a provision related to change orders. Um, cur- currently, the code does not have anything related to change orders, so a change order for a very small dollar amount would have to come to council. Um, what we have, um, uh, been in discussion with the, the mayor and what we, um, felt like was the best thing to, to bring was if the contract is under the hundred thousand, so it's been approved by the purchasing agent, the definition of the purchasing agent in the town code is the town manager or designee. So if it was something that was originally approved by the purchasing agent, then the purchasing agent may approve change orders up to fifty thousand. Anything, um, cumulative of all change orders. Anything above that would need to come to council for additional change orders. If it was a contract that was approved, um, originally by the town council, because it was over that hundred thousand dollar threshold. Then the purchasing agent can approve change orders up to ten percent cumulative of what the original contract amount was. And anything above that would need to come to council. I did include in the staff report, all the, um, uh, information, background information about the other agencies and what their thresholds were.
Questions? Seeing none, is there a public comment on this person?
I have no public comment on this item.
Okay, so, uh. We're ready for a motion. I have all. Go ahead, Dusty.
I make the motion to approve ordinance number, the second reading ordinance number zero two zero two-five dash zero one, amending town code Title III Administration. Chapter thirty-seven Revenue and Finance, Subchapter Purchasing, Section thirty-seven point oh-two Procedure Generally.
Second.
Hey, uh, did the motion, Dusty?
Just on, uh, park. This is long overdue. I just think that, uh, having to come back, uh, for items that you know are going to change over time. Unless there's a, you know, ten percent of going, which just doesn't make sense. So I, I think this is a good. Good and solid, probably best practices for most of the towns in the valley.
Uh, I believe there's been a good deal of clarity in staff reports and information that comes back to council on acquisitions and purchases, uh, so these limits seem reasonable, given the frequent communication that we have.
Other council members, comments? Seeing none, alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And we are on to number four, council discussion, possible approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-five. Amending ordinance number two, uh, two, um. Two thousand seven dash zero five to remove restrictions on the half-cent transaction privilege tax dedicated to utilities and other debt.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this particular half cent started back with ordinance number ninety-seven dash oh one, the, that first part, I'm sure you're aware, is the year. So this is from nineteen ninety-seven. Um, and at this point was when the half cent tax was added, so the tax rate went from, uh, one and a half percent to two percent. At that point in time, it was decided that it would be dedicated for the sewer system debt. Um, establishment of a reserve, um, in the sewer system of four hundred thousand, which was never able to achieve. Um, repayment of debt owed to the general fund for sewer expenditures, which was never able to be achieved. And then if there were leftover monies of the half-cent tax, then those would go towards improvements, enhancements, planning, preservation for the historic town core and commercial area, which obviously that never happened. Um, that ordinance was then amended in two thousand and seven to specify that the dedications um, were subject to pledges of the debt for water and sewer debt. So, um, some, uh, revenue debt was being issued that they wanted to be able to pledge that money towards. Um, okay. See the other one that has numerous revisions. Um, so right now, the way that half cent is, is allocated is going to the wastewater fund to be able to support the fund for the needs that it, that it has, to even just be able to help meet operational costs. Um, so there's also still general fund subsidies that are required in the fiscal year, um, twenty-six proposed budget. We had estimated six hundred and nineteen thousand was needed over and above that, that half cent, um, to be able to cover the cost. Um, the half cent, so here's how, uh, much we estimated in fiscal year twenty-six budget for the proceeds. So the ongoing portion, uh, one point nine million, the one-time portion, which we consider the construction sales tax portion to be one-time monies, because you never really know how much construction may or may not be happening. Uh, we estimated that at two hundred and fifteen thousand, so, um, not quite, um, two point two million in total of the proceeds. This particular ordinance is basically recommended to eliminate those dedications. Which means that the money would go into the general fund, because it would be unrestricted dollars, which provides greater flexibility. Now, we know that the, um, wastewater fund still needs to be subsidized, so it'll go into the general fund and then ultimately go back to the wastewater fund for a while, until wastewater is in a position to be able to, um, get to that self-supporting status. So we had a work session where we talked through this. It's going to take a lot of debt financing, um, and some rate increases. But we were looking at being able to have the wastewater fund self-supporting in, um, several years and even being able to repay back um, some of the amounts, um, that the general fund subsidies. So, um, one of the goals in the strategic plan under fiscal sustainability is about enhancing and protecting existing revenue sources while continuously exploring new and diverse options. Um, to ensure that the town can adapt to economic cha- uh, conditions. That's what this can help us do, because if we have the flexibility to be able to, um, be, be able to move more quickly when we need to, as far as how things are handled. Um, then it takes away those restrictions, um, to be able to be able to be more flexible. Any questions?
Questions?
Sheri, uh, uh, for the total amount that we are expending on wastewater, what portion of that is covered by the, uh, fees that are coming in? Roughly.
Um, the operating costs, um, I want to say that was around fifty-fifty of how much operating is being covered by fees and how much by the half cent.
Has that percentage changed, or are we?
Um, I, I'd have to go back and do some research on, on what that was.
Thank you.
Sure.
The, the goal is clear.
Other questions? Okay, a public comment?
Ron Sova.
Oh, Ron's got notes.
Watch those flashes. I might run a few seconds over. Oh, everybody starts. Mayor, council members, Ron Sova, Cave Creek Town Core resident, uh, being both on Cave Creek Water and Sewer. I'm here to express my opposition to agenda items four and five for the following reasons. The current sewer plant was needed to replace the underperforming system located within Rancho Man- uh, Manana. And more importantly, to accommodate Walmart and other commercial ventures going up in that area. It is. It is this, i- if this plant were not built at that time. I question whether Cave Creek would not have sales tax revenue coming into their coffers other than from the town core. At the time the plant was approved, it was commonly known that it would be running at a deficit. With the town needing to subsidize its operation due to the lack of customers. As such, the half a percent was established out of the town's three percent sales tax revenue. Utilized until the subsidy, uh, would then allow the town to support this and run the system on its own merits. There are three payments remaining approximately one year on the one loan for six and a half million. With about nine payments, which are about four years remaining on the second loan, which was about twenty-three million. The payments equal approximately two million dollars in today's dollars. And, uh, will be reduced to approximately one point five million after the smaller loan of six point five million is paid off in approximately a year. The system is running at a deficit even after the half-point subsidy is applied. The subsidy covers most of the current operating costs. I'd like to see the retention of the ordinances ninety-seven oh one and two oh seven oh five until such time that the loans are repaid. Or until the rate study is completed by this council and their consultant, uh, with public input into it. To see what can be done relative to the outstanding balance, uh, that's currently due on the two loans. It's unfair to say that the system rates will need to be increased to be self-funding, knowing that the plant was needed. And would be subsidized due to the lack of customers then and in the future, which is now. The town has only several commercial sites remaining for hookups. And the residential is going to be very limited due to the restrictions on our cap allowance and the two thousand twenty-seven cutbacks. The, there's currently, as of May of last year, per town records, nine hundred and thirty-eight customers. Of which three thirty-two were single-family and four thirty-one multifamily. And these customers should not be made to be the brunt of huge increases to a system that provided a huge revenue stream to our town with limited future hookups. Therefore, in conclusion, good governance would suggest that the council keep the mandatory half a percent in place until the utility rate study is completed, rather than having the half a percent going into the general fund where it's convoluted with everything else and could be utilized for other purposes. Which would and could create a heavy burden on the existing nine hundred and thirty-eight customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sova. Others?
David Smith?
Thank you, David Smith, um, citizen of Cave Creek. President of Cave Creek. Uh, I should stop using a citizen thing. Obviously, Mr. Sova and I discussed this beforehand. And extensively, and that's why there will be some redundancy. But Mayor and Council, I am here to speak in opposition to your passage of this ordinance, which would change the distribution of income from a half percent sales tax, which now goes to support the town's wastewater system, to instead go into the town's general fund. In nineteen ninety-seven, the council established a half percent sales tax to support expenses from the town sewer system. This was a good and necessary decision, since the costs of the sewer system were significant. In two thousand and seven, a succeeding council continued the dedicated sales tax for wastewater when the town spent tens of millions of dollars to extend the sewer infrastructure and build a new sewer plant. This was because the council understood that individual residences, residents and businesses connected to the sewer system could not pay the annual debt service. The system still must be subsidized in addition to the sales tax funds. The stated purpose of the proposed change is to put the sales tax income into the general fund to increase flexibility. In the overview of this agenda item, it also says that the town will now explore how to achieve self-supporting status for the sewer system. The end result of this, if the money is moved to the general fund, is that the town will immediately have to acknowledge that it is subsidizing the sewer system to the tune of two point eight million dollars per year. The latter, if, uh, the, uh, people who are on the system are required to pay for things will result in hundreds, several hundreds of dollars increase in fees on a monthly basis. Two previous councils recognized that the debts established by the councils could not be paid from user fees. This council should also recognize that the debt was incurred not by the users, but by the town itself. You should too. As, uh, Mr. Sova mentioned. These loans are going to be. As Mr. Sova mentioned, these loans are going to be paid off in a relatively short term and that that would be an appropriate time to take consideration of what to do with this largess from a half percent sales tax that was put in place for a very specific reason. Thank you, former Mayor Augerton, present council member, and even David Phelps. Yeah, I went way over, but I haven't gone over as far as David did or Ron. My own feeling is if I were sitting up there, it would be unconscionable to point your finger at the people that are on the sewer system and say, hey, now you are responsible. Thank you.
David Phelps.
Check your watch. On the green with this guy and this guy. Doesn't happen often. But when it does, it's a glorious thing, we think. Maybe it's our own glory. Why do we have our sewer today? Anybody know? Because the Rancho Manana package plant failed and this town had a special election and the town residents decided, before many people got here who are in this room tonight, that we would protect our groundwater. That's why we're in the sewer business. The half inch, the half percent sewer tax today does what it was originally designed to do in 1997. It protects rate payers from a system that we knew 30 years ago would never be able to cover all the costs. And at some point in time, we'd really like to pay back the general fund for the overages. It was in there in 97. It should be respected today as it was then and utilized by all the rate payers who have benefited from this sewer and all the future rate payers who will benefit from the sewer. That's all I have to say and I thank you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. That's the first time you haven't seen the red light.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I could say, so when we had the work session, we did talk about debt financing for capital projects and we talked about overtime rate increases and continuing to do subsidies for a while on the wastewater. Wastewater was one that was going to be more difficult. But one of the things, and I don't know if Bill remembers off the top of his head. I'm sorry, I don't remember the state statute reference off the top of my head, but there is a state statute that requires utilities to be self-supporting, which is part of why we've been looking at this.
And Mayor and Council, just for clarity, the the tax that we're talking about would go into the general fund and the general fund is going right back to doing the subsidy. It's it's not a, we're not taking away the subsidy. So, well, no, we we have to have a, utilities are all having to be in balance, even though that they're running at a deficit. So that, you want to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so we we do need to be working towards that being self-supporting. The subsidy, yes, as I said, would still continue for a period of time. I don't remember off the top of my head what year we said that that would end, but it was around 2029 or so, I think, for wastewater. But as I mentioned in the word, I was starting to think of before was being able to be nimble in our decisions is is a good thing with the flexibility that this would provide.
And again, for clarity, I I believe, was it 2029 when the last of the debt was going to be paid off?
For wastewater, I believe it's 2029.
So that was of the three systems, the one that actually looked like it was going to be starting to be in the black. Operating, operational.
Correct, and so on that one going from from memory, wastewater has fewer CIP projects going forward and I want to say it was around 600,000 that we were looking at as like the peak on the debt financing over that 10-year plan that we were looking at with the the master plan.
So my point is, we're not trying to put this on the backs of the rate payers, which is what you've heard tonight. That's not at all what we're trying to do. We're, the the money is going into this fund and it's it's going in and it's helping with the operating costs. And then the general fund is making up the the balance or the difference. Instead, we're saying, hey, just put it into one pot and then we're going to go ahead and transfer enough to keep that fund in the black each fiscal year until we get to 2029, where in 2029, we start seeing basically where it's going to be operationally in the positive. Does that make sense, what I just said?
Yes, and we're not there yet. As I said, I have a stack. One of the things that we talked about in the budget work sessions was having the general fund cover operating reserves for all three utilities as well. So there would be that too, that general fund would be providing that.
Question?
Go ahead.
Okay, just a question.
We're at the, yeah, go ahead. We're almost at the at the motion stage, but.
Okay, no, just, would there be anything with this, changing this ordinance that would be detrimental to paying off the debt service and the progress that we've made with those loans?
No, the debt service is backed by a pledge of excise tax revenues and that does not need a dedication in an ordinance because it's all excise tax revenue and the general fund goes towards that pledge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to be opposed to this ordinance as well as the next one. And the next one, we're not talking about it yet, but when we get there, the law of unintended consequences could not be made more clear than 2025-06, where Spur Cross disappears as a funding target, as promised to the community for another half percent sales tax increase that was on top of this one. These restrictions are important for this council and future councils. Yeah, I believe they may be a nuisance, but they certainly impact the ability for the giant general fund, slush fund, to be able to have discretion that's not adhered to adequately by the people making decisions up here. That half cent sales tax on the next item was intended for Spur Cross Ranch.
Let's keep the agenda items, this is the agenda item here for the.
I want to draw the parallel. I agree, Mr.. So the arguments made this evening, this is why it's good to have history and people that live long enough to provide history. It was very specific why the sales tax was created. It's very specific what the purpose is for. People benefit with it today and I think both of these ordinances are unnecessary. And they kind of break, I think, an agreement with the community where there's just this slide, constant policy slide here in the community. Though I'll wait for the next one to have more conversation.
Okay, questions now? If if the questions are, let's save our comments left, the motions made. So more questions to get the facts straight, Tom?
As I look at this, Sherry, this seems to be more a matter of where you're putting the one money rather than a change in policy. I think our policy is we want to move toward having the utilities pay for themselves. The change that you're proposing is one that would bring us in line with accounting procedures that are probably makes more sense. Is it fair to say that?
With that particular goal in mind, yes.
Yeah, the the policy is very important. It's really the policy that's most important here.
Comments? Okay, well, having worked on the sewer system for 13 years and that's where I got started and trying not to break faith with the community, which I am a member, by the way, and have spent tens of thousands of hours working on the utility systems here. So I have as good a, I'm looking around the room. There's not too many, just a few that were here when I began this. We are spending anywhere from two and a half, highest I saw was 2.4 million dollars a year subsidized. And the sales tax put in, when I first started, I think about 1.4 million. So there was up to $2 million coming out of the general fund to subsidize the sewer system back in the 2010 eras. We've always set the rates, once we got off the $50 a month, at a competitive position in the rate studies. There's no intent to change that or to, I don't have any intent on paying back anything because the people who are benefited, the people who aren't paying that going rate, the people in the future would be paying nobody. I mean, they've already, the money's already been spent. So it'd be unfair to future customers not to have just a competitive rate that makes sense. The driving factors in this are that in the next few years, the the debt service will be gone. And that's about 50 bucks a month. Last I looked at, it's been a number of years. But that, for a long time, that was exactly what the monthly payment was, was a debt service, not any of the operating expenses. And we set the goal of covering operating expenses in the first rate study that we did, what, 2017, 18? And in that range, we first put this, first started increasing the rates to try to cover the cost, that's the cost of the people and the power and things like that, leaving the subsidies in place, both from the, and I think the sales tax is a subsidy, just like the amount of money that's being paid out of the general fund. It's another case where it was built far, far too large and it did, it is absolutely true that we would not have Walmart and the commercial area that has made the general fund so wealthy without having the sewer system. That is indisputable. It's been a good thing to do. It has brought the town forward financially a great deal of ways, paid for itself. And there, there really is is no, in my, in my view, there is no need for this separate little category of the, of the sales tax because we're we're going to subsidize the sewer system into the future as far as we have firm rates, although it's starting to drop off because the bonds are dropping off. And that makes it less likely that we'll have to raise rates. There's no intent to raise rates to what it actually costs the town to run that sewer system because it'd be uncompetitive and it'd be unfair. There's been, we wrote off the the money that had been accrued from the subsidies in years past when a couple of people in the audience were on council and that was the right thing to do. It will be the right thing to do probably in the future. I, it's hard to see how all that money could be paid back, frankly. But times change. And what is changing is the bonds that that supported the sewer system are going to be paid off the next couple of years. And we have plans to put in, to expand the system to the number of customers that's always needed in order to support it financially. And that's in the long-term CIP plan. So this is just getting the accounting in place. There's really, in my view, I I don't want to delegitimize anybody's opinion, but it, it all comes out of the same place. And whatever happens, the the town, the town general fund is going to support and subsidize, whether it be the water companies or the sewer company. That's, it's the last resort. It's the pot that all the money comes out of. I don't think a lot of people understood this. The the financing of this sewer system was so opaque with subsidies out of the general fund, with mixed up expenses and the the cost categories were all screwed up. We dealt with that in the council member, former council member and vice mayor. Smith and I dealt with that in the first rate study where the cost accounting had been scrambled, maybe is the best term. So it's just getting our financial house in order. The general fund is going to subsidize it for the future. I just don't see any impact on, on the, on the sewer customers. We're in a good position where we're bringing money in from the the commercial areas in town and we have plans to expand and the debt from the original purchases falling off. So the future looks far more rosy for the sewer system than it has in the entire town's history. And it's just time to get our financial system in order to do the things that bring clarity and transparency rather than all these obfuscations on the sewer system, which frankly I've dealt with for 13 years and I'm definitely going to vote for it. It's just time for Cave Creek to grow up. Times change and we have to have the flexibility to manage the town's finances. We have great challenges in front of us. Sewer system is going to be a challenge too, because it's going to take money and investment and more bonds, most likely, to pay for expanding the sewer system in the the cheapest neighborhoods around. So I think it's a good thing. I think this idea that one council 20 years ago sets a policy and that is it forever, I think that's bogus. I think you you need flexibility to run the town. We need financial honesty and we haven't had it. This is another step in the financial honesty step. So.
I have a question for Sean. 1997, we decided we're going to build the new sewer plant, correct? Is that my, that's my understanding of it? Is that correct?
A little bit of history, so in 1993 is when the town bought the, what was the Cave Creek Private Sewer Company? In 97, they started working towards building the the treatment plant because the treatment plant that was purchased in 93 was under, was over capacity.
Okay.
So to expand into the.
So 97, essentially, we built the new sewer plant. How long is a sewer plant? Because that's the major cost for the sewer system, right?
The sewer plant that was built in 97 went functionally online in 2000 is now decommissioned. It was decommissioned in 2010. So the debt that we're talking about today is for the town's second sewer plant that we constructed.
How long is, what's the life expectancy of that sewer plant?
50 to 75 years realistically.
When we pay these bonds off, we're not going to have a debt like this for another 30 years, roughly?
Yeah, you know, in the capital program, we do have expansions, but we're 20 years from having to expand that, expand that plant. But yeah, it's built into to expand that. So it's it's built to be, to grow into the town system.
So paying for this, one way or another, it's going to get subsidized until the bonds get paid off, whether it comes out of the general fund or whether it comes from this half cent TPT tax, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
I, I mean, this is an accounting thing. I'd rather have the clean accounting than the trickery.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Just you, where, would you explain to me what you see as the issue of the clean accounting in this?
You're taking it from one spot instead of a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there. That is not transparent and that's not financially.
Are you favoring then passing this resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And and it's not because, as we had in the, in the discussion, you know, when we had the, the the work session, this is going to get subsidized for some time. There are probably going to be some major things that happen. I mean, we'll have some kind of catastrophe and we'll have to subsidize that for a year or two until we can get it under control. We have that same effect with the water company now. I'd rather have the money in one spot.
Yeah, I I think I agree with you. Basically, it's, it's what I call a shell game or getting away from a shell game. We just, you know, let's, let's not go back to some commitment that was made in the past that was never adequate. We never had enough money coming in from that half cent and it was having to, we still had to take money out of the general fund. Let's just put it in the general fund and put it in one pot and make it make sense rather than saying we've committed this, but we've got to add some to it. It just doesn't make sense to me. I, I, I see some agreement from Sherry.
Okay, well, let's, let's get a motion on the table and then we can have other comments if needed. I will make the motion. I move to approve the the first reading of the ordinance number 2025-05, amending ordinance number 2007-05 to remove restrictions on the half cent transaction privilege tax dedicated utilities and other debt.
Second.
Okay, so are there any other comments? Yeah, good.
I would say that I judge the half cent sales tax for the water improvement as a justification of the past council as to why an increase in the sales tax was needed. It's much easier to have a purpose, a reason, to tell your citizens that you're going to increase the sales tax for the town. And that was a good rationale to do it. But because it has never fully met that obligation and the subsidies over the years. But because it has never fully met that obligation and the subsidies over the years have continued under the judgment of a number of different councils, really demonstrates that it's not an adequate formula by itself. So it would seem reasonable to update the process, still understanding the history of why that half cent was in place in the first place.
Well said.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Oh, you second. Okay, so let's have a roll call, please. Teresa.
Councilmember Ogerton?
No.
Councilmember Jiskel?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Hi.
Mayor Morris?
Hi.
Uh, motion carries five, one. So we are now on to uh, number five is council discussion, possible approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero six, amending ordinance number twenty, two thousand seventeen dash zero two to remove restrictions on the half-cent transaction privilege tax dedicated to Spur Cross, debt service pledges, trails, water infrastructure and general fund purposes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sherry.
So this half cent started with the original ordinance ninety-nine dash oh three, so back in nineteen ninety-nine. At this point in time, the TPT rate was two percent and the half cent increased to the two and a half percent. It was dedicated at that time for debt service for the purchase of Spur Cross, for operation and maintenance of Spur Cross, which that particular dedication has remained throughout multiple amendments that we'll go through. Protection and restoration of historical and archaeological sites on Spur Cross, and that also has remained throughout all of the, the various changes. It was amended in two thousand seven to add that the dedication was subject to pledges for water and sewer debt. So when excise tax debt was issued, they, I think they must have wanted to make sure every possible excise tax available could go towards the pledge for that amount. It was amended again in twenty fourteen. This time it removed those dedications for the pledges for the water and sewer debt. I kind of think that might have been inadvertent. And then it added to the dedications in the original ordinance that any excess proceeds were to be split fifty-fifty between open space and the general fund. And the open space, there's a lot of details there, was very specific on the, the open space. Then it was amended again in twenty seventeen. This time they added back those dedications for the pledges for the water and sewer debt. As I said, I think they added it back because it was probably inadvertent. The original from the ninety-nine ordinance that dedicated for payment of Spur Cross debt service, it removed that. It removed the fifty-fifty split of excess proceeds between open space and general fund and changed the excess proceeds to be split first one hundred thousand to trails and then fifty-fifty between water infrastructure capital fund and general fund. So the, currently, the way the allocations of the half cent happened, so Spur Cross maintenance is two hundred sixteen thousand. A very small component of this half-cent tax. Trails, a hundred thousand, which actually that's inadequate to cover what the estimated trails costs are. The fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget showed that it would require another one hundred and thirty-five thousand from the general fund to cover trails costs. And then the remaining one point nine million of the half-cent proceeds split ultimately between water infrastructure and the general fund of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand each. The water infrastructure fund really is a roll-up into the Cave Creek Water Fund, so that's where ultimately that money goes to. So again, half cent, it's the same numbers as the other half cent, the ongoing portion, about one point nine million. The construction sales tax one-time portion, two hundred fifteen for a total of, of not quite two point two million. The proposed ordinance before you is to retain a dedication for Spur Cross costs. This was something that was spelled out in the IGA with Maricopa County requiring a dedication. But it is a little unusual that they would do that, because if you have sufficient monies, you have sufficient monies. But they did that. But there is nothing in there that requires that, that dedication to pay for the Spur Cross maintenance, which is only two hundred sixteen thousand out of over two million dollars, be recorded in a separate fund. Those costs can be recorded in the general fund and just paid from those taxes. And then the remainder would just be unrestricted monies. And again, this would help create some flexibility in how proceeds after those Spur Cross amounts are spent. And the water infrastructure portion, so for a little while, yes, general fund will have to continue some of those subsidies to Cave Creek Water to help cover those costs. But again, we were looking at around twenty twenty-nine or so of not needing those. And the next work session, again, we will, we will look at what would it take for getting to that self-supporting status, which again, is required by state statutes. And again, I'm referencing the same goal in the strategic plan about enhancing and protecting and adapting to economic conditions. Any questions?
Questions? No, okay, let's return your, your. We have speakers?
David Phelps.
David Phelps, Cave Creek, thank you for this opportunity to speak again about preservation funding that's been diverted, starting in twenty seventeen, collected through the half-cent Spur Cross sales tax started thirty years ago. Understanding that as times change, values can stay the same. We can have a value in our community for preservation, so much so that we can dedicate part of the largess shown in our coffers today with our twenty, thirty million dollars in excess monies to preservation. We can actually put it up through our sales tax. That's why this was partially meant to happen. It, it happened after I left office with Vincent Francia and another group. I mean, we started the sales tax knowing that the debt service would need help and knowing that there would be maintenance funding necessary for this. But the beauty of this was the nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand that you guys see up there going into the water infrastructure fund that she claims isn't in compliance with state statute, it's going to continue as long as the trail is wide. It's going to go on forever, because we will never be done fixing our nineteen fifty-five Chevy, which is our water company. We will literally never be done fixing it. You had other testimony tonight, talked about a twelve-inch line out at Cohava Springs. It's a nightmare already. Why? Because we insisted that the developer build an oversized line to serve the state trust lands, because we agreed to that in two thousand and seven. And the night they agreed to it, I said, you guys don't know whether you're agreeing to ten dollars or ten million dollars in providing water and sewer to the state land department, because we agreed in two thousand and seven that should we buy the water company? We're going to provide water and sewer to the state land department. So these subsidies, I, I disagree with you guys. I think somebody should recall and reconsider their vote on the last item. But I'm telling you, our town does not have the property tax mentality. Well, it has the same mentality as most places. If they can get it for free, they'd much rather have it. And with the Tea Party's results that went through Washington some years ago, and now it's fused out, maybe, or maybe it's even worse. The, the facts are, property taxes are going to struggle in our town. And if you think property taxes are a good way to fund preservation, then put your new town hall up on the ballot. It's just, it's just a big item. You want to, you want to spend seven to ten million on a town hall? Let the voters decide that. Let's, let's pay for it with our property tax, if it's such a great idea. I see you guys going down a road of co-mingling money, and we know what happens when we co-mingle money. We have to take that knot apart later, after people leave. And because it's such a big job to do, we never figure it out. The money's just gone.
No additional speakers.
Okay, so.
I have a question for Sherry.
Good, yeah, ask your question.
Sherry, I think that both of these resolutions have the same objective of bringing our accounting into compliance with what the state expects. As we are, have the current issue of how we are using that half cent of sales tax or that was dedicated to Spur Cross with great intentions and great commitment. I, I do have some difficulty in the voter, in the optics of this, because I think the, the, the community really wants to have a commitment to preservation, to trails, to open space. But in doing so, I think I'm hearing from you that the way we are accounting now is not in compliance of what's expected at the state level. Is that correct?
A, as far as the utility funds being self-supporting, correct?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm talking about the, the Spur Cross Fund.
So there's, there's nothing that I'm aware of in state statutes related to that. It's really more, we're, we're setting aside a huge amount of money for small costs that easily fit into the general fund.
Right.
And it's not changing any commitment to it. We're still even including a dedication to make sure that we are paying for our share of that maintenance cost to the county in the IGA as required. And the, the flexibility in being able to have council decide where, what are the priorities? So if it's trails, then you're like, well, a hundred thousand was too mu, too little. We need more to go towards trails. Then you're looking at it from a, a different perspective of like, here, here's the amount of money. Where, where are the priorities and where should this go?
Yeah, I, I think kind of going back and forth here, I, I think this is a little bit different than the, than the sewer company. I think the funding here was specifically for open space. That's really what it was. I mean, you can call it Spur Cross, but it's really open space. So we're going to have a presentation, I understand, in the near future on another chunk of open space. I think it's very bad optics, as you put it, where we're going to say, hey, here's a different way we want to pay for this, when we've already taken a half cent out. Or taken a half cent sales tax specifically for open space. So I think the optics on that for the council are pretty bad. Now, what you're asking us to do is fund something that we already have funding for. And we're going to fuzz that by co-mingling the funds in the general fund and then go for another tax to do this specifically, where we already have a tax that's designed to do this. And I think the optics are bad on that. With the sewer company, we're not talking about changing the sewer company. We're talking about subsidizing it. And it's going to get subsidized for, for a number of years. I just think that in this, this particular case, this half-cent sales tax was there to pay for what we're probably going to do or, or put to the town to a vote on the other open space.
Mayor, if I, if I may, in twenty seventeen, the council removed the dedication to open space, and that's no longer part of the dedication.
I understand that, but how did the tax originally get sold? We were going to continue open space for the foreseeable future.
Other, we're a little bit out of order here. I'm, I'm going to make the motion and we. Well, that's, you do that after the motion.
Yeah, we should. At this point, we're supposed to be making questions. I, I had a long question for you, Sherry, but it was a question, I think.
I'm, I'm going to make the motion here and then we can discuss, we can give our personal opinions on this. I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero five, amending ordinance number two thousand seven dash zero five to remove restrictions on.
I think you're reading the wrong one.
Privilege tax, sorry?
I think you're reading the wrong one.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Let me.
Thank you, Sherry.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero six, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-seven dash zero two twenty-one seven dash zero two, to remove restrictions on the half-cent transaction privilege tax dedicated to Spur Cross debt service pledges, trails, water infrastructure and general fund purposes.
Second.
Okay, I had the motion, so let me start here. On the virtue standpoint, I see a lot of virtue signaling here. I would just like to show a little virtue here. We left water in Cave Creek to support Spur Cross. Many, many hundreds of thousands of acre feet that we could have taken in surface water that we left in Cave Creek to keep the, to keep Spur Cross wet, so the stuff would still grow there, so that the jewel of the creek would still have water. The town did that. We purchased additional, and this is in the time that I've been on council. We purchased additional Spur Cross acreage at the entrance to Spur Cross in conjunction with, with the county. We've got informal plans for an election bond to purchase another four thousand acres on the other side. There is not a lot of open space still out there. We're, we've just about got the very biggest pieces in our, in our backpack. The cost to run Spur Cross is two hundred thousand, which is, which comes out of, we can come out of the, of the general fund. We're bringing in one point nine million. When we originally did this, we're bringing in, I don't know, at least half that, maybe probably a lot less than half of that. The second thing is, times change. The, the general fund funds fire protection. We got five million dollars going to six, maybe seven million dollars to keep the town from burning down, which unless, in my time in Cave Creek, there's been two or three incidents where we needed that. The roads fell apart. We need money in the general fund so that we have roads that don't have potholes in it. We are losing general, shared revenue because our population is stagnant because of all the open space we have. While other towns are growing, so our percentage of the state's population is dropping, which is part of the formula for shared revenue. So shared revenue in the general fund is falling. Uh, we have falling construction tax, because man, we don't even know if we have water to, we've cut off some water already. And who knows where it's going to go in the next twenty months when we deal with the loss of water here. So the general fund needs money. Just the fire is half the general fund right there. And we were to do that because of the commercial development. And I don't think it makes sense to tie up one point seven million dollars approximately when we need it to run the town, to keep the town going. If, if property comes up that is good open space, that is worth preserving, we still have a million and a half dollars that's been there for, what, two, three years we haven't spent. And we can take money from the general fund. If we see if that's not enough, we can take money with the vote and do the same thing. So I think times have changed. And there is no obligation for a, a council years in the past, without the issues, without all the changes we've had now, to, to just blindly continue with this to respect this history. Times change. We're not using buggy whips anymore. We, town's got to change with it, and we've got to have a town that functions, that keeps people safe, that, that has water, that has sewer, that has fire protection and roads that people can count on. So I'm, I'm going to vote for this, and I think it's, it's time that it was put to bed. And having said that, I voted for all these open space things. And I don't, I don't think anyone can ever find anything I haven't voted for with good open space. You cannot find them. So you'll find me supporting using the general fund if we have the kind of opportunities like we had at Spur Cross or with leaving the water in, in the creek, so that we had a riparian environment there. So I, I plan on voting for this. In uh, in the creek so that we had a riparian environment there. So I I plan on voting for this.
Second. I have the second. Uh, Sherri, we, do we still have one and a half million dollars? Uh, my sense is that that went before buying the property, the thirty acres.
No, there there's still one and a half million left of the dedicated open space money.
Yeah, there's a question that I think was raised by the mayor. How much open space do we need? And my response to that is all that we reasonably can get. I think open space has been a hallmark of this community. The Spur Cross Movement helped to define Cave Creek. And maybe it's just a a matter of optics, but to me, it seems that I should be voting against this just to show that. We really do want to maintain our dedication to open space. It it does not give the flexibility that you don't, that you uh, probably should have. But at the same time, I think that this is a a situation where we need to look at the voters and tell the voters, no, we're 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 still keeping a commitment there. It may lead, it may not give us some flexibility that we would like to have. But I I'd like to see that commitment remain, so I will probably oppose this.
Other comments?
So. I I know it's privileged information. We can't talk about specific numbers, but. Um, my understanding is if we did a twenty-year bond with the state land trust land, all of it that came up that we could look, we could bid on. Um. We wouldn't have to dedicate the whole thing. Uh, it'd only take about half or maybe slightly more than half of this one-half cent tail sales tax, about a quarter of a. A quarter of a percent, maybe a little bit more. And that might be a, might be a better sell for the town just based on the optics, just my thoughts.
Joe.
It's a catch twenty-two, you know, and if you do, damned if you don't, um, I'm all for open space because open space isn't gonna come back again, and. This is the window right now. I'm gonna vote against it.
Tom, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, I was sitting here this evening because, you know, when you do this, you always look back and go, would I do the same thing again today that I did before? When I first left office, to be honest, I looked back at a lot of things that I had done and said, God, if I were voting today, I would not have voted for that. I've even had transitory thoughts on Spur Cross Ranch. We stopped. The golf courses and the developments and the bridge and so forth. But uh, it didn't end up a conservation area. It ended up a lot of other things in addition to conservation, which is. The reinterpretation of of history and different groups making decisions. Um, one of the things I probably would do different today is I don't know that I would support. Increasing the local sales tax. Without a sunset date. So when we did all this a long time ago with Spur Cross Ranch, we did the development agreements with all the property owners to try to get them to form fifty-one percent. Of assessed valuation to come into town. We did it in six weeks. In order to have the control over what would happen to develop up there. And the development agreement came and went. It's funny, it seemed like it went fast. Twenty-five years was nothing. And all of those protections in the development agreement were gone permanently as well. It was a half-hearted attempt, I think, in recent years to try to renew it, but there was no support for it. And I'm thinking now, why did we ever increase the sales tax? And not for a date certain or a self repealer or a sunset, whatever you want to call it, because. It becomes part of the permanent income stream, and then as it's reinterpreted, it's able to be used without the restrictions, to use the word in the agenda. That had been allocated ahead of time. What's gonna be interesting. Uh, is what the public thinks in Cave Creek. Should be done with the forty-five hundred acres. If the public knew today what the cost of acquiring that land is and two or three scenarios to obtain that land. If the people that live in this community knew how close they are physically. To some of that land or views, including yourself, others here. Including views of that land that would be preserved, it might light a pilot light under the community. To be caring about something besides lumens and light bulbs and dark sky. Uh, it just seems that if people knew what forty-five hundred acres looked like today from Google Earth, it looked like over here, urban developed. They might have an opinion. So the public will have the opportunity apparently on May nineteenth. And maybe somebody will show up who cares about land preservation. You know, Bob, I don't even know. Maybe I'm more of an acronism than I think. I'm a guy running around looking for a T-shirt to put on to save the cactus. Uh, my origin in this town was actually. Watching the Saguaro's being mowed down at the Arizona subdivision, not realizing that was completely legal. And I'm running around filming this like some Sierra Club volunteer. But uh, it is time for the torch to be passed to a new group for open space preservation, four thousand five hundred acres. As the public will find out in terms of terms and prices. Makes Spur Cross Ranch look like an amateur project for cookie makers. There is something coming. There is something that not only will add on to the treasure that has been succeeded up there, but connect as a land bridge. And make this town one of the largest places you can come and recreate and have a tourist destination and actually get out of the car and go experience these places. So, um. I think the test is not in the language agreed to in ordinances tonight. But I love your expression, things change, and that is so true. With one exception of the town of Cave Creek, runaway spending on water and sewer. We're never gonna get. I guess to the point, lest we can somehow manufacture it. We're never gonna get to the point where for fifty-five hundred people, we're not talking about millions of dollars and even water rights. At thirty thousand an acre foot. All these types of figures are staggering for the base of population that lives here. But if people need to choose, now's the time for them to speak up and indicate what they favor. Because if you don't have water, you don't really want to haul it. You do want water. And uh, if you don't have access to the open spaces that could be preserved, you might want that. But there is a number of finite dollars, and people are going to have to communicate with the council on what's truly important. Um. I don't have anything of any wisdom or. Any summary. Assessment to impress you. I'm sorry, I'm out of fuel on this. We did what we did at the time, hoping in our very naive, inexperienced way. The one thing I would say, Mayor, is that the one thing that Cave Creek is all about is quality of life. And all of us moved here because of perceived quality of life, and we've enjoyed our experience here because quality of life. Uh, more open space at a small amount of price on the barrel head really is something we should be proceeding with. Not only the dollar amount, but the political timing of this administration, this state land department. And everything else makes this a very finite resource. So hopefully, the room will be filled on May the nineteenth of people who want to hear the staff and the presentation and actually have a care about it. Uh. I just feel badly that Spur Cross originally with the half-cent sales tax. Was for an intention admittedly naive, but boy, it was passed around more than a dog that won't yield by every council that came in here after that. And some got guilty, and they came back and said, well, fifty percent towards open space. I hopefully trust the people in the community wanting to acquire more open space. I don't think we're quite done yet. And I would hope that this council and future councils would make a tantalizing offer to the residents if we're going to put it on the ballot next November. I would hope we would search what our resources are, and we would combine what we can come up with, we on their behalf can come up with, and see what they're willing to put on their personal property. We did it before, as you know, with Spur Cross Ranch. People took a personal, not a tax, not a not a property tax, a temporary tax assessment, which was played off, paid off early. So, um. I think.
Tom, how does that relate to your support or not support for this particular motion?
I don't support this, only for symbolic reasons. I think at this point, I think I'm a party of one, maybe, but the reason is, is that. We knew what the intent was of the original. Increase, we know we raised one percent. Within one council, the sales tax. At that time, we were the highest in Maricopa County. Because it's not just the two and a half and the three. With the other, it's close to ten. What are we doing with the ten? I mean, so it's not a little deal in terms of the heat that we got when we first did it, but, um. So I'm just a symbolic vote against this because I think everybody knew what the intent was, and we had people that came after when the rest of this had gone away and and they found better uses for it. But water and sewer and Cave Creek, as I said at the last meeting, it's at least a quarter of a billion. It's headed to a third of a billion. And for fifty-five hundred people, we could have had our own water trucks show up and fill our pools and. Given us heavy in at the front door. So, um, I just hope at some point there's a solution that doesn't mortgage generations to come. And doesn't set the foundation for property tax, but uh. I also, you know, I appreciate the role that you're playing because. Five minutes with you takes ten minutes away from some of my extra storytelling, so.
Cynthia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think two considerations uh, for the ordinance in particular, with four major revisions over twenty-five years. It obviously is problematic. Other councils have dealt with it that way in the past, uh, so, which is what brings it to our consideration at this point. I think it's unnecessarily complex, and it shows that it continues to change based on the council composition, as well as any other given year where it's had change. Uh, so I think it's time to reconfigure that in a way that would be positive going forward for the budget flexibility and transparency. Uh, however, I think the council needs to show greater respect for citizen and past council priorities. Uh, by being more specific in their allocation to open space preservation. We still have an opportunity to do that in the fiscal year twenty-six budget. You know, we'll look at the tentative budget, but we still have some wiggle room to do. And we have to demonstrate that as a council, we are true partners with the citizens in moving forward in open space. And making best use of their funds, not just with an additional assessment, if that's agreed to, but also with our share of the sales tax money. So I would support the ordinance as its uh, first read today.
Is everybody, if you said, okay, I want to point one thing out. Nothing changes in the expense. Nothing, the money is not going into open space today. You all saw. And Luis was here today. You all heard. That their projection over the next was ten or twenty years was general fund declining precipitously. So. You're gonna have to cope with some dollars somewhere.
Would you like to sell a water company?
You you need to make the case with numbers, yeah, not quips.
Just try to get your attention, Mr. Mayor.
The money now is going in the general fund of the water. We're taking it away. We're putting the gin, put it into general fund. The half that's going into. Uh, the water is going back in, is gonna stay where it is. It it, so so let me, let me finish what I'm saying here. Let me, and now I'll give you nothing, and anybody else that wants to rejoin her can. Um, we can spend money on anything. This is not changing the powers of county. If you, if the council votes to spend the entire general fund on open space, we could do that. So this is just to clean up all the BS, frankly, that has gone on in the accounting systems in this town. Since probably two thousand seven that I know of. Um, and it's not an either or. This is not a vote on open space. It's a vote on accounting. Where the money is. It can still be spent on open space or whatever we had, wherever we didn't want. So we can signal virtue and say, hey, gee whiz, we're all, uh, we gotta uh, vote on open space because someone won't like our vote because they won't take the trouble to look into the accounting system. The town's financial status, the challenges we're we're facing in the future and today. And that's why this makes sense.
So I'm, I understand where you're coming from, and to a certain extent, I agree with it. I do think, though, that in this particular case, open space is very important. So I'd like to see. A dedicated set aside amount annually, and I mentioned this when we had the the workshop, the budget workshop. I'd like to see just out of this sales tax, X amount of dollars a year, whether it's a hundred thousand a year or two hundred thousand a year, whatever that number is, I'd like it put in there. Um, that says that the council is serious about open space. Will give the the folks. The opportunity to vote on a, uh, you know, perhaps a property assessment on the, when we we come back on the nineteenth. But this also says that the council's got skin in the game, and I think that's very important. I I mean, I I think it's very important because we've taken half a cent sales tax for twenty-plus years. And we didn't do exactly what we said we were gonna do with it. So I I'm not disagreeing with you that it needs to be done to clean up the accounting. But I would like to see some kind of commitment in the budget where we set aside money. Above and beyond that. At least until that proper, that forty-five hundred acres is paid off. We take a portion of the general fund. Like I said, it can be a hundred thousand, it can be two hundred thousand. I'm fine with that. That's not gonna pay the full amount. But that sure says that the council is invested in the future of the town and the future of open space. My my two cents.
So Dusty, where where do you stand on this particular resolution? That, you know, that's that's what the vote is up to tonight. Sherri, they had something to say.
It, yeah, Mayor, is it okay if I?
Yeah, we.
Um, so I I'm. Working on getting the tentative budget put together for for the next meeting, and. Um, one of the things that we had talked about in the budget work session that I've been working on is in the the capital fund that we're taking half of the construction sales tax. And recording it there in the capital fund. Um, so I'm looking at uh, preliminary numbers for that tentative budget. That that's about one point two million a year going into the capital fund, plus a capital reserve of about eight million in addition to the one point five million. Of open space money. So there are pots of money to be able to address open space.
I I'd just like some kind of dedication for it.
Yeah, a- and. It not revising the ordinance. If we continue with twenty seventeen dash oh two, it still doesn't have money going to open space.
All right. I move, we vote.
Okay, dead horse. So let's, uh.
Well, and Mayor, just for clarity again, um. A big chunk of this money is going to the utilities, the utility infrastructure fund and.
Take it away from utilities to get to our neutral. Yep. Okay, so let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Frieden?
No.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No.
Councilmember Auterton?
No.
Mayor Morris?
Yes, so major fails, uh, fourth to. Two to four. Okay, we're on to the next uh, agenda item. Council discussion, possible approval of resolution number R twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, rescinding financial policy number one. Establishment of a minimum contingency percentage. Sherri, you're on the, you're still here.
Nah, I'm still here. I still have a bit of a stack going. Um, so part of the um, strategic plan was to go through and update financial policies, and. As we've um, been dealing with the budget and looking at what's um, how things are set up, there are definitely um, a variety of policy changes that I have recommended. So uh, the next item on the agenda is going to be talking about revising another policy to make it a comprehensive fund balance policy. This particular one, number one, only addresses um, contingency um, reserve and. The uh, the next one has a, an operating reserve. Well, those are really redundant. So people call it an operating reserve. They call it a contingency reserve. They call it a rainy day fund. It's all one and the same. And to have multiple of the same thing doesn't really make sense, so I'm recommending that we rescind this one and we do a more comprehensive. Um, full fund balance policy, not just on rainy day funds or contingency reserves or operating reserves. The next one will be a full fund balance policy.
Okay, questions for Sherri?
Uh, this makes sense.
This is the three months, right?
It, yeah, that's what the. Operating reserve is recommended in the next item.
Being a fiscal conservative, three months doesn't sound like much, especially with what we're facing. Um. I I know. Three months is what people are, you know, to spend our. What, thirty-six million dollar? And go down to three million, four million? In the general fund?
So thirty-six million is not general fund. Um, it is all funds and a whole lot of different reserves. The um, the amount of how much the. Reserve that was recorded is about the same as the three-month reserve.
Really?
Yes.
So.
And that's, and that's. Um, I would say somewhat common. Actually, a lot of places do less than that. Some places do do more, and it kind of just depends upon what's happening. Um, I would say somewhat common. Actually, a lot of places do less than that. Some places do, do more and it kind of just depends upon what's happening. Um, but the policy that we're going to be getting to also addresses. Covering reserves, operating reserves in other funds as well, not just the general fund. So there'd be even more in operating reserves being set aside. Across all the funds. Um, so. And I lost track of a thought that I was gonna mention, but. It's been a long day.
So if, if we had, uh, what scenario would happen that would make that, that would exhaust that fund? What, I mean, uh, like a COVID or a, I don't know.
So, so the Great Recession, um, now I'm gonna forget off the top of my head what it was. It was either 12% or 14%. Of the, the peak before the Great Recession to the low during the Great Recession of how much revenues went down. So.
But we're losing revenue, we're, we're losing revenue just in every day. I mean, the economy's still pretty good and we still have the. Brown's projection over 10 years. It's going down and.
But, but you're, I think you're referring to the scenario where he said, what does it take to break things? He wasn't saying that's a prediction of what's going to happen. He said, here's what you need to know about what it takes to break things. So I, I can include those slides again. I, I had some updated slides in the work session that showed that it's, it doesn't. Doesn't really work out that way.
So didn't? Piggybacking on what the mayor said, didn't he say that, that uh? Um, his prediction was a mild recession for six months to a year and then we snap out of it? And then this kind of steady state with whatever the.
Yes, and, and that was, that was at the beginning of, I guess people are calling, kind of calling it the tariff war. And so now we're into that a little bit further and we're not seeing some of the things that, that he was concerned about right now, maybe a little bit later. We might see some recessionary impacts.
They're already making deals. That's, that's, that's gonna be off the table in a couple of months. I mean, they're already making those deals.
Yeah, so, and that was what, what he was seeing as the trigger for recession.
So let me ask another question and kind of piggybacking on what you were saying, uh, Mr. Mayor. The uh. The state's been beating us up about, and beating all the towns up about how much money we have in the bank. Does this help us, I don't want to say hide the money, but make it less. Less likely that the state will intervene against our. Needs?
Um, yes, so um what we have proposed in the next item that maybe we should have. Made these um reversed, would, i- it, it does set up. Uh, reserves of the money instead of just saying, oh, it's, it's just a bunch of, a pot of money that we haven't even decided what we're gonna do with. Is essentially what they're looking at it as, as, as like as if we've got. Huge amounts of money. We don't even know what we're gonna use it for. Whereas we do, we have a lot of things that we need to set aside money for. Um, and a lot of, lot of priorities, so. Um, this is setting that up to be able to show and to be able to demonstrate why we have the amount of money that we have.
Other questions, comments?
Could we? Do you have some slides to show the next one?
On the next one, yes, I do.
Could we pause this one and do that one and then come back to this? Cause it might make more sense.
Sure, let's, let's go ahead and do the other one, then, Sherry.
You need to read the agenda.
Uh, let's, let's do number, uh, council discussion, post approval of resolution number R 2025 dash 07 rescinding financial policy. Number one, establishment of a minimum contingency percentage.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mike.
Sorry, I was.
Big number seven.
Okay. So uh, financial policy number two, um, that currently exists titled establish a reserve policy. This was adopted by council back in January of 2020. Um, and as I indicated, so this is really duplicative of a contingency reserve um i- in the way that the original policy was. Um, you have contingency, some people call it contingency, some people call it operating, some people call it rainy day. There's just a lot of different names for it. But it really all serves the same purpose, um, which these, these funds are intended. To be able to help stabilize through economic changes, revenue changes, budgetary changes to stabilize all of that. The policy did not address other reserve types. Um, it did not address. Um, assignment of fund balances, which is a GASB, um, GASB is governmental accounting standards board. So there was a statement number 54 related to fund balance. That there was the recommendation and um it does not address how remaining unrestricted and unassigned balances will be used. So I wanted to talk about some definitions. So what I'm proposing is that we change this to a fund balance policy, not a reserve policy. So fund balance is. Um, similar to what in the for-profit world, where, what they call it equity or retained earnings. So it's that difference between what are my assets, what are liabilities, that net difference, that's my balance. Um, from a cash basis perspective, on a more personal level, think of it like your checkbook balance. So you have a, a balance at the end of. The day, the end of the month, whatever time period that you're looking at, there's a balance in there. That, that is our fund balance. When we talk about reserve fund balance, that was a term previous to um GASB 54, the governmental accounting standards board statement on fund balance. Um, and technically, and nobody really used it correctly back pre-GASB 54, which is why they. Came up with GASB 54. Reserve meant that it was a portion of fund balance that you could not appropriate, that you basically couldn't spend on anything. So. Um, it could have been a reserve for um. We prepaid this item. Well, the cash is already gone. Yes, it's not recognized an expenditure in that particular year. The expenditure will be recognized later when the um goods or services are received. Um, so the cash is there, it's not available for appropriation. The uh term of fund balance that was set aside for a specific use. The technical term pre-GASB 4, 54 was designated fund balance. Um. They always mix the terms up all the time, everybody did. Um, it is the example here on fund balance. So on the table on the left. So this is looking at general fund um right out of the act for fiscal year 24. So the beginning fund balance for the general fund was 31 million. Revenues, we added 14 million expenditures, we subtract 14, 14 million. We had uh net other financing uses, which was uh basically net of some transfers of. Um, reducing about 400,000 to get to an ending fund balance of 31,000 or 31 million. So that's kind of your checkbook balance. Well, that same 31 million on the table on the right-hand side. Your fund balance is made up of a variety of components, which the components are what we refer to as re. Colloquially as reserves. So we had um a. Portion of the fund balance that we could not spend because there was the cash loan to. I should say desert hills, not wastewater, sorry. Um, uh, 368,000. Um, because they're in the same pool of our cash and investments and they had a deficit balance. We had prepaid items of 751,000. The biggest part of that was the fire engine that we had prepaid. Uh, but had not received um as of June 30, 2024. Um, there was a very small amount um of money that we get from Southwest Gas that's held for any capital reimbursements. Um, in the budget for fiscal year 24, they had set up capital reserves of 22 million. And then the remaining unrestricted unassigned fund balance was 7 million for the grand total of the ending fund balance of 31 million. So each one of those are components of how, how is that 31 million designated? What is it set aside for? Does that make sense?
Man, what, if, if we put your policy into effect. What would that 31 million look like if we spent down to that level?
Down to, so, so this is taking whatever the fund balance is and saying, how is it designated? What is it set aside for? What are the reserves of whatever the ending balance is? It doesn't have anything to do with the spending. Other than if we say we're only gonna spend this on such and such.
But if we decided to spend down to the uh three months or whatever you're talking about here. What would that number, what would this thing look like? How, just, just the bottom line, the 31, what would that go down to?
Um, it's somewhere in the vicinity of 3 million, but then there's like another 3.1, 1 million or so. Um, that the general fund is going to set aside as, as operating reserves for the other funds that don't have the money for their operating reserves. But there are other amounts in the general fund as well that are, are set aside.
So that's 6 million. So we're, so we'd spend 25 million dollars to.
No, what we want to do is not make it look like we have 25 million that we have no plans for. That we want to designate. That 25 million to something.
Sherry, as an example, um, we're creating a vehicle replacement, a vehicle and equipment replacement fund, and then we're also um. Having a um capital.
Yes.
Uh, reserve or capital, that all kind of fits in with.
Yes, and we'll, we'll go, we'll go through all of that in the slides. So um, as I was referring to the GASB statement number 54, the title of that was fund balance reporting and governmental fund type definitions. This was effective for the fiscal year 2011 financial statements. Um, and it changes the way that fund balance is classified based on the constraints on how the money can be spent. Previously was whether or not it um had a restriction on, on being able to be spent, whether or not it was available for appropriation. This kind of changes the logic of, what are the constraints? So this is the hierarchy uh for GASB 54. So on the top left, you have non-spendable. So that's very similar to what we talked about as a reserve fund balance. It's just not available for appropriation, whether it's a reserve for prepaid or um the cash loan um to desert hills that general fund has had to do. There's not money there to spend. So then everything else falls under spendable types. And then under spendable types, you have uh restricted, and then we'll get into the other unrestricted types, but restricted means. That there's some legal restriction, whether it's state statute, whether it is um debt covenants, contracts, anything like that. But it's something external to the town, um has put a restriction on that money on how we can spend it. Unrestricted, so that is split up between committed, assigned and unassigned. Committed is something where council has at the highest level, which is an ordinance. Um, has established and said, this is how this money is going to be spent. The assigned is basically an intention of how that money's gonna be spent, whether it's direction from the council. Um, just the nature of the fund that the money is sitting in dictates what the in, intention is for that money. And then unassigned is what's left over of, we don't really have any plans for this money, is essentially what that means.
So that's where you put the three-month reserve and that unassigned bin?
So GASB 54 has very strict requirements on um. The rainy day, operating reserve, contingency reserve, whatever we want to call it. They have strict requirements. So yes, it would fall under the unassigned, but then it would be a note disclosure of, okay, in the unassigned, we have this much. Set aside in our operating reserves.
So all you're really talking about is parking the money in bins three and four. And just limiting what goes into bin five is that three-month reserve.
Yes, exactly. Um, so GASB 54 had some recommendations on policies, so. Um, they uh recommended having a policy about what council action is required to establish, modify, rescind a commitment. Um, it uh recommended having designation of who is authorized to make assignments. And in what order the balances can be spent. So most commonly is you, you don't want to say, oh, we're going to spend. The unrestricted money first, when we could have spent restricted money, you want to spend restricted money first because. That's what it was intended for. Um, and then uh policies on stabilization reserves, which is again, and, and another name for. Whether it's operating reserve, contingency reserve, rainy day, any of that. Um, and so on the stabilization reserves, they recommend policies on what are the conditions for spending that? And what are the requirements for replenishing it if you do spend it? Um, additional policies recommended um by GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, is a level of unrestricted fund balances to ma- maintain. Um, how unrestricted balances uh can be increased or decreased and how balances replenished when they fall below required levels. So um, the things that we're recommending on the policy, so first off, changing the title. So it was establish a reserve policy. I'm recommending we make it more comprehensive as a fund balance policy. Um, included definitions of some of the terms, like what I just went through on what is. Um, spendable, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, et cetera. Um, policy for um the types of reserves, which we'll, we'll look at those in just a moment. Um, and in the policy, the assignment of fund balances. So. Um, what I have in the draft for you is authorizing the town manager to establish assigned fund balances based on council intent. For the policy on the order of spending the fund balance components, um, I have in the draft policy. Having the most restrictive being spent first to the least restrictive last. Um, the use of positive remaining fund balances. Um, so I have a slide on what's, what I have in the policy there. So I've included something there and. How we would replenish the negative, we'll talk about that and then also some uh reporting requirements. So one of the reserves is for operating reserves and for the general fund, the streets fund and the proprietary funds, which is the enterprise. Funds, the three utility funds, um, three months at 25% for all of those. For the streets fund, um, I put in the policy for an expectation of initially, we'll fund it with budget savings. So. We had talked about this in the budget work session of we would just make the transfer from the general fund. There typically would be budget savings and we would build up that reserve over time with making that transfer from the general fund. Uh, but if it's not fully funded at the 25%, we would still set up a separate reserve in the general fund to help. Um, have that set aside, but not actually make that transfer.
How do you determine how much to, to put in the, the street fund?
25% of the operating expenditures.
Well, that's gonna be in some years, it's HIRF. Only in some years, like now we're spending 3 million, which is six times HIRF. So how, how do you decide where, where it goes?
So the, the streets fund, what we did was we said, we're not having just a HIRF fund. We're consolidating all streets costs in one place. So it doesn't have anything to do with what the, the revenue sources are. It's of that fund, the total expenditures, the operating expenditures, we would set aside a, a reserve, uh, operating reserve of 25% of that amount.
But we're, we're spending 3 million dollars a year for the next three years, and then we're gonna go down when the streets are at a, at appropriate. Position, then we'll go down. So are you gonna go down to where it would be after that?
Yes.
Program is done?
Yes, um, but there are concerns and discussion of with the way costs are going up, it might not really go down that much. By the time we get there.
Set of bids was quite good.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll see, we'll see where it goes. But yes, it would be based off of whatever that level is. Um, for the proprietary funds, so um obviously they don't have enough money to create operating reserves of their own. So. Until they start accumulating money, we would set aside separate reserves in the general fund to cover what their operating reserve balances should have been. Um, in the policy, I have that the use of the operating reserves would be for unanticipated, non-recurring needs. Um, that we would not normally apply those to recurring annual operating expenditures. Um, I know a lot of places with um COVID was a very different type of recessionary uh impact than, than others have been. And so there has been places that said, okay, in order for this quick turnaround, like we may have to dip into our operating reserves. But then how would they replenish it? Um, I think. Probably a lot of places because Arizona didn't have quite the impact of COVID that some of the other states did. We actually. We actually did fairly well. Um, I haven't heard of anyone who actually dipped into their operating reserves. They assumed it in going in that maybe they would need to, but they didn't. Um, the, and then the operating reserve for an economic downturn. So, um, being able to allow time to restructure operations in order to get to a point of, um, okay, now we've reset to what we think is a new normal for a while. Because you don't want to go on for a very long time relying on reserves. Because if it's another great recession, that went on for a very long time. And there were some places that were getting themselves into trouble because they were trying to rely, rely on their reserves too long and not making the adjustments in their operations to be able to accommodate that. Um, and, and on that, there should be an adopted long-term plan, um, of how we would manage if there was such a recession.
So let me give you a real world example. Okay. So we, we're going to restructure, we're going to have a, a new rate study later this year. And in that rate study, there'll be some kind of adjustments to, uh, incent conservation of water, which means that you're going to put more into the variable expense, even though it's only fifteen percent of a bill. So in, in the past, that's been set at a fifty percent level. So, um, the costs are all fixed costs. I mean, essentially eighty five percent, seventy five, eighty five percent fixed cost. So, um, you'd almost have to look at how long it takes to get a rate increase put into effect. Or a surcharge or something. Can you do that in three months?
It's a little longer than three months.
That's, that's my point on three months, that I'm not sure that works with the, you know, you have to advertise the rate, you have to do the study, you have to have hearings and all this.
Yes, but, but you're.
Losing a hundred percent of your revenue.
Exactly.
In those three months.
Well, depends on how much they cut us.
I mean, sir, we, we talked about, we talked about in the great recession, our revenues were off by fourteen percent. So we're not, I mean, you bring up a good point, but I'm just saying, I think we have enough time to right the ship. Um, especially being small that like we are.
Okay. Fair enough.
And this, this wouldn't be the only reserves that we would have available. We're not, we're not, we're, we're only talking about operating reserves right now. There are other reserves that, that we're going to get to besides the fact that we still have money over and above that, that's not assigned to a reserve. Uh, budget carryover reserves. So this is looking at operating budget only. This isn't really intended for CIP budget. This is basically taking something that is a, a big project, um, whether it's like consulting services that is working on something. Um, that maybe you start it and you budget it for it. We'll, we'll just use this fiscal year as the example. So for fiscal year twenty five, there was a project that we said, um, we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on this project, but then something, um, got delayed or whatever. Well, it was intended that we were going to spend a hundred thousand out of this year's appropriations, this year's funding. And what is normally done is you set up a budget carryover to say, okay, so we're only going to get twenty five thousand done this year. We need to carry over seventy five thousand. You would reserve a portion of the fund balance of the funding that you received this year to say that's the money we're going to use to pay for the additional seventy five thousand in the next year. That make sense? Okay. And then that takes it out of that remaining unassigned unrestricted balance, because there really is a purpose for it. Uh, vehicle and equipment replacement reserves. So we are proposing an annual allocation of the equipment costs over whatever their useful life is. We have in, um, the general fund, a, uh, equipment replacement reserve for IT equipment. We have in the, um, utility funds, um, equipment replacement reserves for, um, large equipment and vehicles in those. And then in the capital fund, we are accumulating for the replacement of the engine. The next engine for the regional station that we would have to purchase, that Daisy Mountains purchasing the first one. The, uh, brush truck and the water tender and all the other vehicles and heavy equipment and all that stuff that's not in utilities. And so the replacement reserves would be used to fund the replacement of those, um, equipment items.
Sure. Just, just for explanation, so we're not moving money from the general fund reserves into those reserves. What we're doing is we're figuring out what the useful life is and each year we're contributing so much per asset into that fund. So it's, it's kind of a nice way that you can plan for replacements without a big hit all at one time.
It's depreciation, which is just real money instead of Sony money and business.
Yes. And, um, what we're looking at is replacement costs, not what the historic cost was of whenever the item was purchased. Um, so, um, that's what we're using for like the next fire engines and the brush truck. Um, we're so far off on being able to do that, like we didn't spend time on every single asset going, what is that going to be? When we get closer to a, a fully funded status of the equipment replacement reserves, then we're going to put more effort into looking at replacement cost. Um, the debt service reserves are based off of debt covenants, um, that require, uh, certain amounts to be set aside. Typically it's, um, the equivalent of a year's worth of debt service payments. Um, the proprietary funds, uh, the enterprise funds, the utility funds. So if the debt service reserves are not fully funded, then we would set aside separate reserves in the general fund to help cover that cost. So that's kind of where Desert Hills being a cash loan there, we had to help support, uh, the debt service reserve for Desert Hills. Capital reserves. Um, so what the policy is stating is this is a minimum requirement. So it's a, a good place to say, okay, we have a five-year CIP plan that maybe we don't need this in the next year, but we will need it in future years. Or something coming up that it's not even in the five-year CIP plan yet, because it's still in preliminary phases. We don't even know what to put in the CIP plan yet. Then we could put however much money we want to in the capital reserves. The minimum that I've set up in the policy is that it must be enough, um, with the balance of the reserve plus whatever estimated revenues, um, that would go into that reserve for the next year to cover pay-as-you-go projects in the next year. So essentially cash funded projects. Um, if it's a project, we know we're going to debt finance, we're not going to set aside a, a capital reserve for that amount. Might set aside a debt service reserve, but not a capital reserve. And then the policy is permissive for creating other types of reserves as they are needed, whether committed, assigned, unassigned, whatever those might be. So for instance, you didn't see in there a reserve for the cash loan to Desert Hills. It's just something that it's permissive to be able to do those things as we need to. And the policy for positive remaining available fund balances that unrestricted unassigned money. Um, so the use of that positive balance in the policy, we're saying we would use it to eliminate shortfalls in related funds. Um, so, uh, general fund would cover shortfalls in streets, capital improvements, utilities, other funds. Uh, proprietary funds would transfer if they actually were in a positive situation, they would, uh, transfer it to the fund's capital reserve, um, to help cover the future costs. Um, another use of positive balances would be reduction or avoidance of debt. So setting aside money so that we can cash pay for, uh, capital projects. Um, if there's a one-time capital need, um, then, uh, we would, could just use that remaining balance. And any sort of tax fee or rate stabilization, um, setup that we felt that was necessary. If we have a negative remaining balance, so replenishment of that amount. Um, so based off of the previous part of the policy on the positive balances, any distribution of positive remaining balances to help cover the negatives. Um, the appropriations. So in the policy, I'd put appropriations on the next budget process to put at least twenty percent of the negative balance, um, budgeted to replenish that in that reserve until it is fully funded. Um, and if those are not feasible to be able to replenish, then a written plan would be presented to council. And it could be things like reduction of services, increases in taxes, fees or rates, or some combination in order to be able to accomplish that. Just basically the only way you get there is either you spend less or, or bring in more money. And then for the reporting requirements, um, so we would report on compliance with the reserve requirements during every budget process. And if there was a need to dip into the operating reserves, then that would be reported to council as soon as possible. Um, with the circumstances causing the issue and the plan to restore the reserve balance. So typically that's going to be some sort of economic downturn related type thing, unless there's some natural disaster or who knows what might, might happen. Um, so as far as the strategic plan goes, the goal number one is related to financial policies and standards. And, um, the action item was to update our financial policies, uh, annually. Um, starting with fiscal year twenty six, we're a little ahead of the game doing it now. Any questions?
Questions?
Uh, just basically, do any of these policy changes have an impact on our current considered budget? Is there anything that needs to be adjusted in the tentative budget going forward for fiscal twenty six?
So what was presented for the proposed budget was essentially this, except for, came up in the budget work sessions about having reserves set up in the general fund to cover the, what is not available in the utility funds for, um, operating reserves in those funds. So that will be incorporated in the tentative budget.
Thank you. Sure.
I was just going to ask a procedural question because six, seven and eight are all tied together, right?
Six, seven and eight.
Financial policy number one, financial policy number two and financial policy number four. Do you have slides for financial policy number four?
I do. And that's about the budget, um, policies, fiscal planning. The, this is the fund balance policy. So the, so we're, number two is the comprehensive fund balance policy, which eliminates a need for number one, for a separate, separate reserve policy.
Okay. Your presentation has convinced me you have so many different reserves and so many different areas for so many different things and so many different replenishments. That it's a accountant's full employment act. And we got plenty of, it'd be plenty of money if we need it. Okay. Which one, do you want us to, are you ready? Are you, do you have any other questions before we? No. Any comment on this? Teresa, any public comment? Do you want to just take these? I want to take these in order. Oh. It's just us. Uh, you want to take six, uh, six first or seven first?
We just did seven.
Yeah, we talked about.
I, I would like, just so that people understand what we did tonight, I think I would just adopt number seven first.
Okay.
And then you could rescind number six. So.
Okay.
It looks like it's in the right order.
Okay. For time consideration, I'll, I, I moved to approve a resolution, uh, number twenty twenty five dash zero eight. Adopting revised financial policy number two renamed as fund balance policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Not for me.
Makes sense.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero on the number six. Um, I'm, I move to approve, uh, resolution R twenty twenty five dash zero seven, rescinding financial policy number one, establishment of a minimum contingency percentage.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Number eight, last one.
Okay.
Did everybody make it? How many minutes? No, those are done. That's, this is it.
My God.
Yep.
Sounds getting hungry.
Okay.
Good.
Did you read this item?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Did you?
I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, council discussion, possible approval of resolution, our, uh, resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero nine, approving and adopting revised financial policy number four renamed as fiscal planning and budget policy. Sounds like a long one.
Try and make it fast. Okay. So the current policy number four budget process was adopted by the council back in January twenty one. And it was really focused on the steps in the budget adoption process. Um, there were a lot of other, uh, related policy and procedural aspects that it didn't address as far as like, what is a balanced budget? Um, dealing with financial forecasts, what is structural balance and budget monitoring and quarterly reporting. So the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that we have policies on our long-term approach to our financial health. What is the difference between a legally balanced budget and a structurally balanced budget? Um, the features of our development process and principles that guide the decision-making. So things that are, uh, being recommended as revisions to the policy. So first off, changing the title to be more comprehensive than just budget process, calling it fiscal planning and budget policy. Um, updating some of the definitions. So, um, operating capital, um, changing that, uh, to five thousand, up to a hundred thousand. So we did, um, during this budget process, we changed what a CIP project was from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. Uh, more updated number, um, uh, for modern times, uh, capital projects, so a hundred thousand or more. Um, and, um, deleted the part about appropriating for the life of the project. So what was being done was budgeting for the entire project in year one of the project, even though they knew that the project would take multiple years. And so it wasn't a realistic financial picture of how much would be spent, um, in year one, two and three. Uh, department narratives, um, so updating that to include the narratives should have goals, accomplishments and the performance measures and a variety of other clarifications on the definitions. Um, we did put in there that we would do an annual budget. Um, I don't know if at some point we would be looking at doing a biennial budget, but, um, most places in Arizona, I think, have been doing the annual budget. Um, a balanced budget is a legal requirement. And so in Arizona, that means that the expenditures are within whatever the available resources are, which is estimated revenues and your fund balances. It's not necessarily structural balance, which we'll get to in just a moment. Um, we added, um, to the policy related to financial forecast, preparing one annually. Um, doing it early in the budget process. So the intent is that we would have financial forecast information for the council retreat. And when looking at estimation of revenues, using an objective analytical process that includes looking at past revenue trends and current fiscal conditions. Um, structural balance. So we've defined that as the ongoing operating expenditures plus debt service amounts funded with ongoing revenues. And, uh, making sure that those are sufficient. So your ongoing revenue should be able to cover those costs. The one-time revenues or other sources should not be used to fu- fund ongoing costs because those are, are one-time, um, revenues, one-time, uh, reserves. Expenditures, um, should not be postponed in order to achieve a structural balance because you always have to have the catch-up later. And yes, during economic downturns, sometimes that is what happens.
So I have a question on the one-time source, not to fund ongoing projects. I know that we use, uh, building, uh, building fees. Don't we use those for personnel costs?
Um, we do put them in the ongoing revenues and yes, they will fluctuate at times. Um, I would say it's a small dollar amount that it doesn't have that significant of an impact on the calculations.
Well, but we're going into a position where there's not much available land to be built. And I think we're paying for positions in building services based on that revenue.
The, the money all goes into the general fund and we don't look at it specifically of how much is the building revenue generating as far as what is that due compared to the costs? We do that when we're looking at calculating the fees, but we, we don't. We do that when we're looking at calculating the fees, but we, we don't really do that because it's all blended in the general fund.
Okay.
And also that we would not do any external borrowing for operational requirements. And I'm also working on debt management policy that I'm hoping to have for you at the next meeting. Budget carryovers, so basically a policy that we would include, include those in our proposals in the budget. So contingency, so the, the policy number one that you just rescinded was for a contingency reserve, so a component of the fund balance. It gets very confusing when you refer to a reserve as contingency because there's also a contingency as an appropriation line in the budget. And so what I'm trying to do is try and clean that up to, to provide some clarity of what are we talking about? So this contingency is that line in the budget that is available to, is part of our budget capacity. So if we need to, to transfer money, like for instance, the big one this year was the fire engine that we received, it was been recorded as a prepaid before, but they forgot to budget for it in this year. So we had to do a transfer to cover that. And the policy does require that the use of the contingency appropriation would need council action. So the policy added some requirements for performance management and have those aligned with what council's overall goals and strategic efforts are and that they should be used to help determine budget decisions. And that there would be reporting and monitoring of the key performance measures. So that was something that council did adopt some performance measures and those were included in your draft books that you saw for the work sessions. The policy said that the budget calendar needed to be adopted by council. I haven't really seen that anywhere. We changed it to where the budget calendar would just be handled administratively. It's not that we don't reach out to say, hey, like we're thinking about these dates for the work sessions, like all that stuff would still happen. So we just changed that. The CIP adoption, so that's also not very common. So apparently in the past, like there was an adoption of the CIP budget separate from the rest of the budget process. And you really want to see everything as a whole because if we're looking at CIP projects and saying, oh, this sounds great. And then when you get to the operating side and it's like, well, we can't, can't meet our ongoing needs of our expenditures because we adopted too much in a CIP budget, like that just doesn't work very well. You really want to see it as a whole in the process. And it was weird the way the flow was that they had work sessions prior to tentative budget adoption. You really want to have the work sessions before, because that's where you really get the input from council of what do you want to see before we get to tentative budget adoption? Also included having the budget summary available to the public and operating budget. So monitoring at the department and the fund level, which is what we're doing and we're bringing to you as part of each quarter, whatever budget transfers need to be done and CIP budget monitoring at the project level. And then we also put in the policy having quarterly reporting to council within 60 days after the end of the quarter.
And your software does this now, this software we paid for a couple of years ago?
Not exactly. It's manual.
It's manual?
Yeah, we're, we're going through reviewing and looking at things manually for monitoring.
They don't make software that does this automatically?
Yes, but we don't really have. The, the, the accounting software that we have right now is very low level. It works pretty good, it actually has more features than I thought it did when I first got here. But it's still a low-level software.
Well, software is cheap compared to people.
I agree. So again, with the strategic plan, reviewing the policies and so that's what we're doing here. So any questions on any of that?
My question is, do you sleep at night? I mean, how'd you get all this stuff?
Once in a while I get a couple hours of sleep.
Questions from council?
Impressive.
Yeah. I just want to say you're like, you're like Keyes or Friedman, you're like, you should take their spot as the chief economist of the United States. You've earned your title of chief fiscal officer, which we didn't recognize, we voted and moved on, so I'll give you some applause tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, no questions, we're ready for motion. Tom?
A motion to approve resolution number 2025-09, approving and adopting revised financial policy number four, renamed as fiscal planning and budgeting, budget policy.
Cynthia had the second?
Good idea.
Very comprehensive, thank you.
Good job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Is there any further business?
Worked you pretty hard tonight.